Good evening, Daytona Beach. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 1st, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us this evening. And at this time, we would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the election, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not listed on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach your election, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances, therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated, to disrupt such meeting. Order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to orderly process thereof. Please be courteous, respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the election or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner May. Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Trager.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here. This time, we will have the invocation led by Commissioner Trager, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner May. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the wonderful day you have given us and for us being here together tonight. Help the commission study and make the right decisions for our residents in Daytona Beach. We truly love our city and want the best for it. Bless those overseas who stand in front of us for our safety. Bless our first responders and our police and our firemen who do so at home. Help us make the right decisions. Let us come together. Bless us, and we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the November 3rd, 2021 regular city commission meeting. So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Trager and a second by Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the agenda approval.
I went to sleep there. Thinking about some changes on this agenda. At this time, we will ask that our city manager review our agenda, and if there are any changes, he will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, for tonight, we are asking to pull from the agenda item 8H, the USSI Inc. Sanitary Sewer Inflow Abatement Services. Add to presentations a check presentation to Derbyshire Place, the recipient of the proceeds from the mayor's golf tournament. Add the following Bike Week sponsorship: 150 to Sun Chasers Motorcycle Club annual toy run, from the Bike Week sponsorship fund of Commissioner Reed; $300 to Leisure Services for the Senior Oasis Holiday Parties at the YSG Center; and 500 to the Daytona Beach Pop Warner Football Cheerleading for the Daytona Beach Bucks Cheerleaders from the Bike Week Scholarship Fund of Commissioner Danette Henry. That concludes.
Is it too late to add 500 from the mayor to Pop Warner on Bike Week?
Okay.
Can you all?
We can add that tonight.
Because I think they must be going somewhere or something.
Bob, is that okay to add to tonight?
Yeah, we can do it.
Yeah, I thought so. Commissioner, are they going somewhere or something?
I guess. They're trying to raise $7,000 by the 6th of December. And this is the first time we've made it to Nationals.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay.
$1,000 in five days and 500 from Commissioner Reed.
Okay.
And you can add 500 to me from me, too.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all. I knew they were calling me, and so I never got to get back with them, but I appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion.
No, I don't. Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
This is just the agenda.
This is just the agenda? Okay.
Commissioner Trager.
Approval of the agenda, we have a motion for the agenda, right?
Didn't I make one?
There was one.
Yep.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number six, which is now your presentation, Mayor.
Tonight, I want to take this opportunity to introduce the community to Mr. Miguel Rodriguez, who is the executive director for the Derbyshire Center, or is it Derbyshire Place?
Derbyshire.
Yes, Derbyshire Place. And I had the pleasure of visiting the Derbyshire Place a couple times, and the work that they do is extraordinary on a lot of levels. I think our, one of our recent mayor's initiatives where we go out and talk to the community about making a difference in the community is about the Derbyshire Place. And so you will learn a lot about the center. But tonight, after I visited the center, I decided that I wanted to figure a way to help the center. And so each year, we have a mayor's golf tournament. And unfortunately, this year, we were rained out. And so we didn't raise as much money as we normally raise, but we still raised a considerable amount. But the reason, and I normally just send the check. This is the first time that I've ever presented the check in public. And the reason I'm presenting it in public is because I'd like to encourage the community to perhaps consider rallying behind this great organization. They do tutoring. They feed folks every Friday night from throughout the community. They have a great thrift store that sells and supplies much-needed goods and supplies to the community, has a phenomenal, first-rate, world-class community garden, and 100 other programs and projects that are just worthwhile and outstanding to our community, and I appreciate his great work. Usually, we raise anywhere from $9,000 to $10,000 on our mayor's golf tournament for each charity. The other charity is the Keach Center, Keach Street Clinic, and we give to that charity each year. And then every year, I select a different charity to share with. So it's my honor and privilege to present a check from the mayor's golf tournament for $4,000. And so we appreciate you. Thank you.
This is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And our one speaker is Mr. John Nicholson, speaking on 8F.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I want to thank you for paving Butler. I've been asking for it for 32 years, so it's about time we did it. And there were three times that it was supposed to get paved and just didn't. So it was finally done today. They've milled all of it from A1A to Peninsula, and they started paving part of it from A1A West at 4 o'clock when I passed by. The only thing I ask of you is that the rest of the neighborhood has Miami curbs. It's the curbs, they're just kind of like gullies. They prevent the edges from fraying, and it makes the pavement last longer. So in the future, within the next 30 years or so, if we could put a Miami curb there, it would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Accessory Dwelling Units Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code in relation to accessory dwelling units, amending Article 4, Section 4.9(c)(4), Article 5, Section 5.3, Article 6, Section Table 6.2(c)(1, and Article 11, Section 11.5. To add ADUs as a permitted accessory use for single-family lots in multiple zoning districts, establish use-related standards and defined terms, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So move, second.
A motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Cantu.
And I do have a number of speakers. Our first speaker is Donna O'Connor, and on deck is Karen Russell.
Thanks for all the work that you do. Really appreciate it. I am in favor of having ADUs in the city. I don't have a horse in the race, so to speak. I don't own one, but I do own a lot of rental properties in Daytona Beach. In my opinion, we need more. You would think that I would say, hey, I love the competition. Why would I want to have ADUs? And I think it's because whenever I do put an ad up, I get 50-plus applications. And I would say, I would probably take half of those people if I had more rentals. The last person that I rented to, I had just put the ad up 60 days in advance. The apartment isn't even available until January 1st. It was a lady moving down from Tennessee, retired from one of the airlines. She called me up and she said, I don't care what it looks like, I'll take it. I will send you the money by Venmo today. I don't even want to look at it, she said, because I've been trying to buy a house from Tennessee with absolutely no luck. When that didn't work, I tried renting a house or renting an apartment. I can't find anything. And we're not even saying anything affordable. This lady had plenty of money. So she rented what I would consider one of my lower-quality apartments and flew down the next day because she did have flight benefits with her retirement benefits. Took it, paid me up. She's ready to move in January 1st. And this happens again and again. I just get way too many people asking for, to be considered for an apartment. And I think that if we want to continue to lift Daytona Beach up, we want to attract those kind of people to Daytona Beach. These retirees who need a place to stay for six months or so, maybe a year, while they find a house, while they get resettled. And these are the people that are going to be contributing and spending money in our community. So I would ask that you consider voting in favor of ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Russell, and on deck is Bob Wayne.
Hey there. I live at 124 South Wild Olive, and I have been a proud Daytona resident for six years now, so much so that me and my husband just bought our first house in June. Like the previous speaker, I don't have a horse in the race, but I can back up what she's saying. I'm originally from Nashville. I also lived in DC. I have several friends that are interested in moving to Daytona because they know that we're developing and the housing market is great. But they don't need to rent a house that's three bedrooms. A lot of them are single, a lot of them are couples. They just need a small place, like a garage apartment, that they can rent while they look for houses. That's not asking a lot. A lot of the people that I know that have these places have enough parking. It's not going to make the neighborhood crowded. It's not going to bring disruption to the city. So I'm going to make it really short because she covered pretty much everything that I was going to say, but I really support this, and I think you guys should really consider it. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, I believe it's Bob Wayne, and on deck is Bruce Corville.
Good evening. I'm Bob Juan. I reside at 812 South Palmetto here in Daytona Beach. And I want to speak out against this ADU amendment because we have a lot of this in the southern part of the Daytona Beach right now, little garage apartments and that type of thing. And I don't believe that it really attracts quality-type of people that are non-transient-type people. Also, to accept this amendment without giving any regard to parking, I think is a mistake because so many times, people are parking in yards on the easements, and it just turns the grass into sand and makes a mess out of everything when it rains. And so I think that I would appreciate it if the commission would give a little more consideration to this amendment before passing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bruce Corville, and on deck is Mark Mercy.
My name is Bruce, and I live here on Hartford Ave. I'm also in District 2. Bruce, I would like to say thank you and everybody in favor of the last time I was here. It was 5 to 2, and we're here tonight, and I hope that we can have this vote. I'd like to say the reason I'm pro-ADU, along with most of my neighbors, we put a lot of time, talent, and treasure, and money in our properties to make our home more appealing, not just for us, but also to enhance the neighborhood. Most of us are collecting Social Security, and at the time, you could make ends meet. Now, with a 31-year high inflation with no end in sight, we're feeling the pinch. Food, gas, utilities, property tax, et cetera. So we're not asking to let us make ends meet. Not everyone can do this, but for those of us who can and accommodate with adequate parking and keeping properties well-maintained, let us have your vote here tonight. I must, I myself would like to rent to people like teachers, nurses, police officers, business people, people that can and will make a difference. This is our dream, not to tear it down, but to build a better tomorrow and a better future for all of us, for our children, and hopefully one day for theirs as well. Thank you all for hearing me tonight, and I pray that this vote for the ADU here, thanks again.
Our next speaker is Mark Mercy, and on deck is Cassie Mercy.
Good evening. I'm new to Daytona. I'm in favor of the ADU, and part of the reason is just turned 61, looking at Social Security projected to go bankrupt by the time I'm eligible for it. We created a place for my daughter. I work for myself. I use my hands, suffering from arthritis in my hands. I don't know how much more life I have with them. I would like to have an opportunity, since I'm paying about four grand a year in property taxes. If I ever got to the point where I couldn't work or I passed away, I would like my wife to be able to keep the house and generate some form of income. You know, I would have a very nice place. I'd have a garage that is built. Cars wouldn't be on the street. Everything would be accommodated. It would be a high-end place. I'm not saying I'm going to do it, but since I'm in the house and I don't know what's going to happen in the future to me, I would like to be able to legally do something, and it would be renting to subsidize. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cassie Mercy, and on deck is Denise Stone.
My name's Cassie Mercy, 265 Hartford Ave. I'm in Zone 2 with Mr. Strickland, and I am in favor of the ADU as my husband has said. I'm not going to disclose my age like he did, but we're getting up there, and quickly. So we did buy recently in Daytona Beach, and we bought a fabulous house that was the troubled child on the block. We have since been a regular at the building department with all of our permits, redoing the house, upgrading it. Every day, we get people coming by telling us what a great job we're doing and how we're improving the neighborhood. We would just like the opportunity to have the option, should it need be, to have an accessory dwelling unit. This is a, the way I look at it, is a win-win for the people of Daytona, who, in your invocation, you said, you, you know, we treasure our people. And it's also a win-win for the city because you will be making revenue off of this. This isn't like we're asking for something to be given to us. We'll be abiding by the laws. We'll be paying our fees. We'll be getting our inspections. So I really don't see a problem as long as we have adequate rules and they are followed and enforced. I don't feel that there's anything that you're asking us to do that would be hard to accommodate. I mean, proper parking, proper place, accessible doorways, the right size, and it's a perfect place for visiting nurses. We used to rent many properties to firefighters, who are some of the best tenants you can ever ask for, police officers, teachers. I mean, all these people that are just very, very detrimental to a positive environment in our city that need a place that they can afford. So please give it a consideration, and I know, Mr. Strickland, I know your stance on it, but I am a constituent, and I'm voicing my opinion for. So thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Denise Stone, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Thanks for having me back again. I'm here in favor of ADUs. I know I spoke a few weeks ago with you guys, and I appreciate your 5 to 2 vote. And, Mr. Strickland, I really hope you change your mind and vote for us this time. I actually own a property in Daytona, Hartford Ave, 330 Hartford Ave. And I've worked very hard on my home. I provide, no, excuse me, I have a really large parking area available. I have a very nice front porch. I have a very nice deck. I've worked very hard on my home. I can provide a proper legal ADU, following all the rules necessary, of course. There are people who have small homes, and they can't have an ADU. I get it. I remember last week, you mentioned, oh, you know, not everybody can afford $150,000 building on their property. Well, that's okay, too. Not everybody can do it. I'm blessed with one property. I cannot add a property. 1954, they tore down a two-car garage apartment in my property that I am not allowed to rebuild. It was grandfathered in and built in 1932. But I'm okay with what I have. People who can also provide inexpensive housing for people who want to move to Daytona Beach. I think legally, it's a great thing to have. I believe you need to have parking. I will call my neighbor up and say, why are you parking on the grass? I can't tell you how much I hate it, guys. I hate you parking on my grass. If it can be provided, done legally, why can't we have it? I'm not asking to create crowds on our streets. I'm not asking to have people wandering in and out of our neighborhood on a regular basis. I am not offering a short-term rental. I think a lot of people misrepresent that, an ADU is a short-term rental. It is not. We are looking for qualified renters who can afford not a hotel, and they can't afford a major apartment for $1,800 a month. We can afford it a little bit less to those people. And thank you very much for hearing. And please, Mr. Strickland, vote for your Zone 2. We would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck, and I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this handwriting, it's 2822 South Atlantic Avenue, is it Keon? Kim? Okay.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. In essence, I'm in favor of ADUs, all right? But unfortunately, what you see before you has some problems with it, parking being a major one. I don't know if any of you have gone down to the city of Hialeah in Miami. They have parking, they have ADUs, all right? And from one end of the property line to the other end of the property line are cars. You get a little bit of grass in between the cement, but otherwise, there's no landscaping in the front. There are areas in our city that we are apparently supposed to be pushing for, CRAs, to help them. Well, if we do what we're supposed to, like my yard, I have a wall. There's only a singular nine-foot driveway. I have an ADU in the back. Where do they park? They've been, they've been doing it for over 100 years, so what happens to me? What happens to the other people on my block, in my localities? Where are they going to park the cars? Because that's the biggest pain in the, you're here, all right? How do we assure that somebody's not going to go wall-to-wall parking because it's legal? If they get a permit, they put parking all the way across. What does it do to house after house after house after house? If there's a need for parking, and they can't park on the street, which this ordinance will not allow, we have 27 parking spaces for the public on our streets, they can't be used. So it makes it very limited on certain areas on the beachside. I don't know what it's like on the downtown and midtown, but it doesn't affect us very much for what we have because our driveways are limited. And for me, when I wanted to add something, they'd say, oh, well, you have to take 21 feet of driveway, which would take my wall out all the way to my sidewalk. It does not look attractive. So there are some problems here. I don't want us to pass this and end up regretting it in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Kim Nguyen, and on deck is Tiana Goodrich.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Nguyen. I've been a Volusia County resident for the last 22 years. I'm at 2282 South Atlantic Avenue. So my mom is approaching her retirement age. I won't say her age, she'll probably get mad at me. And she's planning on moving in with me. She's going to be moving from California. I do have an ADU, and if I'm able to rent it out, it will actually help me to be able to improve my, my property and also allow my mom to move in with me. It'll help me to pay my mortgage and to keep the home up to code. Being able to rent out the property, it'll also help to provide affordable and safe housing for single parents, college students, travel nurses. So it'll give opportunities to people that currently can't afford the high prices of rent, like at an apartment now, they're renting for $1,600 for an apartment. Whereas if we're able to rent out the ADUs, it is, of course, at a, you know, at a lower price for, you know, people that might be struggling, or, you know, college students and single parents. So I am in support of ADUs. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tiana Goodrich, and on deck is Krista Goodrich.
My name is Tiana Goodrich.
Hello. My name is Tiana Goodrich. I am at 2800 South Peninsula in Daytona Beach. First, my mom is not making me come up here to speak, although she did highly recommend it. As a 23-year-old earning significantly less than is needed to afford the very high rent in the area, I was extremely hesitant on moving here from Fort Myers, Florida. But here I am, and here's the thing. I don't want to live with my parents. You guys have met my mom. She's kind of a lunatic. But there's nowhere in Daytona that is affordable, that I've been able to find, that I would actually feel comfortable living. As a single girl, we do have a high crime rate, and I just don't have the luxury of risking it. And you may have, you may have people say there's plenty of housing. It's not true. They're not in the rental market like I am. So, please, for those of us that have to live with our parents, at least let us live in the guest house. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Krista Goodrich, and on deck is Mark Nocira.
Krista Goodrich, 2800 South Peninsula, Daytona Beach. Additionally, the owner of the world's most famous brewery on Main Street, Hop Cycles Daytona, and a Salty Dog Property Management Company. As a property manager, we make the majority of our money on large-scale projects like beachfront mansions and apartment complexes. I tell you this because I'm not after personal financial gain when sharing this info. Every single day, Sunday through Saturday, I get no less than three phone calls from people that cannot afford housing: college kids, new families, retirees, single moms, families with moms and dads. When these people call me looking for somewhere to live, I don't have an option for them less than $2,000 a month. The owners of these rental homes cannot lower their rents, because the cost of insurance has tripled in some cases, taxes have increases, increased tremendously on non-humsteaded homes. The cost of repairs is incredible if you can even get someone to show up to do the work. So, yes, rents are extremely high. ADUs would fill this extremely large gap in our community, a community that deserves affordable and safe housing. Code enforcement. I've lived in several communities, states, and countries, and never have I seen a code department so overrun with a small number of voices that complain about everything. My suggestion: Do you like Daytona Beach shores, Hall County, Georgia? Get rid of the long-term rental license. If you rent a home in Daytona Beach shores, you know you're getting quality. Why? Because smart investors and homeowners want to live where it's not so cumbersome to do business and to use our home as we desire. These are some things that are cumbersome, like getting a rental license inspection for our home that you rent, that you wouldn't be required to have the same inspection if you purchased it and lived in it. It's ridiculous. The long-term rental program needs to go, so people like me will start buying more fun stuff in Daytona. Unburden code enforcement, and don't blame innovation and change. Blame old and outdated laws. Costs. Costs of building of ADUs was discussed. Sorry, not you guys' issues, how much we spend or don't spend on an ADU. It shouldn't even be a discussion. What is being discussed is if they should be allowed. Yes, they should, for a gazillion reasons: a fuel-rich, smart, and green growth, positive economic incentive for renters and landlords, opportunities for young families to earn passive income or to save for retirement, since government aid in retirement decreases consistently, beautification of dilapidated buildings, buildings of, building of fun, small, safe beachside communities, covering the lack of housing and our lack of resources, and a place for our servers and bartenders to be able to afford. I agree with the naysayers. There will certainly be growing pains, and it may not be 100% perfect. Nothing is. But it is a step in making Daytona as great as everyone in this room knows that it can be. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Nocira, and on deck is Emily Nice.
Hi, hello. I live at 344 Hartford Avenue. How do I follow that? I don't know. That was very good. And really, everything I, I'm for, and I'd like to say everything's, I think, been said already. But I would like to say that I think those parking issues that were mentioned, I think that's caused more from a short-term visitors and family and things like that than in this, than in this kind of use. And I also think if you have licensing and inspections in place for each property, then I think most of the issues for the naysayers shouldn't really exist. I think the income that comes in from, from this idea is also to help people improve their properties. And I think this can be a gateway to getting more quality people coming into the town. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Nice.
Hello. I'm here on behalf of the Seabreeze Neighborhood Watch as the co-chair, and I can tell you that we have had a vote, and our Seabreeze residents have voted against this, because we have seen too many times, over many decades, where these apartment rentals become problems for code. They become problems for the residents, and it makes our way of life really difficult. When the U.S. News &amp; World Report came out with their 2020 report that Daytona Beach has low crime, that was during the COVID year. The FBI and city data for the last 10 years has rated us in the top 6% of the most dangerous cities in the U.S. I can tell you, as a resident of Daytona Beach, we very definitely have a fear of crime every single day on the beachside. This ADU proposal is for the oldest neighborhoods, with the oldest infrastructure, the most narrow roads, and speaking of, 82% of the driveways in Seabreeze are single car. That means that we're going to have a lot of parking on the right-of-way, in the grass, on the lawns. And in order to avert that, you have to call code, and a code enforcement officer has to see the car parked on the grass. Well, I can tell you from experience, along with all of my neighbors, that code doesn't have the time to just drive by and check to see if a car is parked there. They are absolutely way busy, far busier than any other city code enforcement. In fact, Daytona's code cases are three times as high as unincorporated Volusia County, with all three types of code boards included. That's 120 code cases per month, and of those, 45 deal with rentals. We already have a problem. So, I'm suggesting not to do away with the entire idea of this, but perhaps take a closer look at the issues that involve the residents who voted you into office, and to consider the plight of what the residents are going through now, because it is a heavy burden. We are trying to fix up our homes to have a normal way of life, but we have threats to our safety, and those threats are very evident in the crime stats for our area. They're there. Please consider them. This document? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening, everybody. Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue. I am strongly in favor of ADUs as yet another housing option. The parking thing has been raised. I think there, there are worse things. I don't, I don't think it's very attractive to see a bunch of cars parked on a lawn or whatever. But in the scheme of things, in the scheme of our problems in this world, it's not even in the top 1,000. I'm sorry. And what we could also do is open up the streets to street parking. Some of the streets in this town are super wide. For not a big city, we have really wide streets. And a lot of people speed on the streets, and sometimes, if you narrow a street a little bit, people have to go slower. I mean, it could kill two birds with one stone, right? Put, allow some, allow some parking in areas where there's not currently street parking, and that could solve some of the problem. I will say, I have to say, not everybody who's a good citizen earns very much money. If anybody in this town looked at my income statements for the past 10 years, or 20 years, or whatever, they would say, "Oh, my God, what a derelict. We don't want her in our town. She's a lowlife." And obviously, I have, you know, some people here think I'm actually a good citizen, and they listen to my ideas and stuff, which amazes me, because I'm basically an anarchist. But, you know, I, I love, I love my city. I never thought I would participate in government anywhere, but I never lived in a city where the city commissioners cared what our names were or gave out their cell phone numbers. So, it's, it's a different thing. So, some people who have really low incomes can be really good citizens, but they have to find places to live. Me, I'm crafty. I have found places to live in the middle smack dab of downtown Tokyo, and they're the most obscure places, like the size of that table. But not everybody is as lucky as I am with their house, good fortunes. So, I would say, yeah, let's open up, open up ADUs and other creative options. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina.
My name is Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive. I sit on several affordable housing committees, and I am a commercial realtor working in the affordable housing arena. I have mixed feelings about ADUs. If they were done properly, if they were done so that they don't impose difficulties on other neighbors, if they were done so that they don't make, take too much of our resources, maybe yes. But I have a house across the street from me that has five units. It's a single-family house with a garage that should have one apartment, has two, three divisions. My own house was, at one point in time, divided into three units. Never should have been. I fear that some of that will happen if you don't have really, really, really good laws that regulate ADUs. My kids would like to have an apartment where they could not live with me when they come out to the beach, but have a little more freedom. My neighbors don't want that. So, I, I want you to really, really think. Our neighborhood did vote. We don't want more ADUs. We want regulations. We do want rental licenses if you're going to rent out, and we do want, I just had a conversation this morning about having sprinklers in buildings that you rent out. So, those are some of the things that we need to consider when you're considering ADUs. At the moment, I'm against where you are with it.
That was our final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. Well, we've heard from 15 residents, and I'm sure you all have received a number of emails, so...
Can Mr. Jagger kind of explain some of the new, or the newer regulations that we were talking about, like it has to be owner-occupied, one AD unit per property, and some of the other things?
We'll let Mr. Morozak do that.
Thank you, Dennis Morozak, Planning Director for the city. I'm just going to go right through the ordinance, and we can talk about some of these things if you have any questions. The, so out of the ordinance, the, the accessory dwelling units only authorized on a lot that allows a single-family home. So, only a single-family home can have an accessory dwelling unit. Multi-family duplex cannot. There's only one ADU permitted per lot. They have the single-family home. You have one ADU. The design of the ADU should be compatible or would be compatible with the principal dwelling unit, so it's not something that would, would kind of stick out. It'll be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. This is, this is kind of an important one. The lot containing the ADU will provide off-street parking spaces in accordance with the code. What that means is that the single-family home is required to have two parking spaces. That's what the code requires. The ADU is required to have at least one parking space. If the ADU has two bedrooms, it would be required to have two parking spaces. So, the parking would be covered by, by the, the code requirements. I've heard a couple of people mentioning that parking may be a problem. We did try to address that with the parking requirements. Either the principal dwelling unit or the ADU has to be owner-occupied, which means you cannot rent both of those out. You have to have the owner in at least one of those, one of those buildings. There has to be a written lease, and the lease has to be for at least six months, so you can't have short-term rentals on the ADUs. If an ADU is to be permitted in a planned development district, it has to specifically say in the PD District that it, that it would be permitted. ADUs that are in a transitional overlay district, we talked about this before. There are some districts that permit it. They have a larger lot requirement in those districts. That doesn't change. They still have to have the larger lot requirements to have an ADU in that district. Then we also have some minor modifications that we allow. Staff can take a look based on a, based on a lot. If there's an instance where we might be able to adjust something as little as 10%, staff's able to do that on a case-by-case basis. One of the other things that we did, we wanted to make sure that we had ADUs that weren't too large for the lot. So, we broke this down, and this is some language we took from Deland and something that they use. So, if a lot size is between 5,000 and 7,500 square feet, the maximum ADU you can have is a 500-square-foot ADU. If you have a 7,500 to a 10,000-square-foot lot, the maximum you can have is a 640-square-foot ADU. If you have an over 10,000-square-foot lot, you can have up to 800 square foot for the ADU. One thing we wanted to look at is make sure we don't have a, an ADU that's too small. So, we took a look at the building code and what the building code requirements were for a, a minimum size for a livable unit. So, if there were a studio or a one-bedroom unit, the minimum size of that ADU has to be 240 feet, square feet, and if you have a two-bedroom unit, it has to be 390 square feet. So, it's not too small. It's not too large. And, and again, the last section was talking about the parking. One of the things we did want to do is create a situation where, if you do have the ADU, you are required to provide that parking, and the parking has to be on a stabilized surface. It's not parking on the grass where you can, wherever you can put it. So, when somebody comes in and they want to develop a property with an ADU, it has to meet all of these requirements. If it doesn't meet the requirements, they wouldn't be entitled to have the ADU.
Well done. Well, I, I don't care where we land on this vote. I just want to commend your team and the staff for doing what I think has been an exceptional job, both in presentation and what you've provided us. Good job. Comments, commissioners, thoughts on this issue?
I just have one problem. I, our parking is very, very restricted. With the county, when they passed their parking in July, I mean, you have an ADU that's a two-bedroom, and it's a single mom with a five-year-old. You expect them to have two parking spaces? I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense. In Zone 5, there's no way to do that. And so, I do have a problem with that. And then another thing, you know, the Granny Platt, that state, that passed parent and grandparent. If you have your parent, let's say you have a single mom, father, your father living with you, you're actually reducing your taxes, but what if you have a two-bedroom, like, right now? I'm just going to give you, for instance, my son just sold his house in Bayberry, bought a house in a quiet place in that country, and it has an ADU attached to it, which is still out, and it's a two-bedroom. Okay. There's one person living in that ADU. They have one car. I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense that we're requiring two parking spaces for if...
I turned my nose at that also, because I thought it says that we don't want it to happen. But I think that perhaps this is done because there's this fear that people are going to park these cars everywhere. So, I, I don't know how you address that, but I, I don't, I think it says, basically, we don't want them to succeed. By doing that.
Several things. The first thing that I have an issue with is this idea that people who, who have less finances are demonized as criminals. I have a real problem with that. The, the young McDonald worker that's here from, for college, or the mom that's just getting back out on her own, or the person that's just here in school, or, or whatever reason, they're good people. They just don't have the income that other people may have and can't afford a $1,600 rent. I said this, I said this a few months ago, and I said, I read a few months ago where they said, "I can afford, I cannot afford a $800 mortgage, but I can afford a $1,600 rent." So, so basically, you're saying that I don't qualify for an $800 mortgage, but I can, but I can pay a $1,600 rent. And, and it's absurd. It's absurd in America. It's absurd, just period. And so, the idea that these people are going to bring... And so the idea that these people are going to bring crime to the neighborhood just for wanting a decent place to live, it's absurd, and that's why I'm going to fight harder for ADUs today. And I'm going to say to you that the young lady who needs to be the Hillary Banks from the Fresh Prince of Bel Air and live in the family, in the home in the back, we need that for her. And we need the mom that's moving down from California with her daughter, she needs to be able to come down and live with her daughter and bond with her daughter and spend her years, her senior years, with her daughter. And those are the types of people that we want to benefit from ADUs as well. And so I'm fighting for ADUs. I think ADUs are a wonderful thing. It is an additional way. It's not going to solve the affordable housing issue that we have in the city of Daytona Beach, but if one family, two family, or 10 families can benefit and have a home or a place that is safe where they can live in the United States of America, then we're doing our job here. And so I'm asking all of you to support this ADU initiative. We need it for our citizens. Thank you.
Ms. Jagger?
The parking issue where it says one parking space per bedroom. If this generally holds true for the people who would be doing with these AUDs, most of them I cannot see affording two or three cars. Possibly one, possibly none. So I think maybe one parking space per ADU should be sufficient. I cannot see an ADU being that many bedrooms that they would need parking spaces for two or three, or four.
You're exactly right. Most of these people are going to be Ubering or taking public transportation, as far as I would think. I don't think that they're going to be bringing two and three cars.
All right. We have other comments? If we have.
I appreciate that I have the privilege of living in the United States. I appreciate you bringing that up. So as an American citizen, I appreciate the fact that I have property rights. I appreciate the fact that we tell our residents, "You are purchasing land, and this is what you're getting," that we abide by that. I appreciate that tremendously. The fact that we are speaking about something that impacts the entire city theoretically, but in fact is going to be impacted predominantly, the beach side, parts of the mainland, but certainly not the entire city. Beachside is already impacted by, as you've heard, an entire zone is saying, "This is not what we want." Zone 2, there was a meeting here. Am I correct? Was there a comment here from a citizen? I'm merely reflecting what was said at the dais not 10 minutes ago, putting it out there. Ma'am, I'm just not acknowledging you. I'm not acknowledging you right now. Something was said here at the dais, which said what? It said that they spoke. I'm mirroring what was said. Given that, it's not just beachside, it's also, and I'm in Zone 3, I represent Zone I have citizens who daily are inundated with traffic and parking. I have dormitory living that continues in Zone 3 on both beachside and mainland. This is what we're already living with, and we want to add more and more and more. To that, I'm also going to add, how many times have we, as residents, not said, "Main Street needs parking? Where are people going to go?" And all of us know who live on beachside, that when we drive during special events, what happens? People are going up and down our roads, and we have to close off-road because of parking issues, because of driving issues. And what you're requesting is that we do this over and over again. What I find interesting is that we're saying it's not about affordable housing, it's not about low income. We're not saying it's about that. But at the same token, we're saying, hey, people can't afford cars. We're speaking of police officers and fire people and nurses who most likely have two cars, while at the same time, we're saying, no, they don't. So this leaves me, actually, I'm not even confused. All I'm saying is that as Zone 3 representative, it is my duty and my obligation to speak with the people who oftentimes are too scared to get up in the dais and confront difficult topics. Because I recognize it's hard to get up here and believe that an entire audience is applauding certain ideas. And you're sitting there, and what you want to say is, "But that's not me, so that's my position, and I can only speak for those in Zone 3 who've reached out to me, and they are many." I will say that a resident took the time, which we have not even acknowledged, took the time to print out a map of, and I think it should go on the record, of places that would and would not be impacted by the ADU concept. Beachside, overwhelmed, overwhelmed. And beachside parts, and again, I'm in Zone 3, I look at my little Zone 3, inundated and overrun. Again, I wish, and many of the residents in Zone 3 wish, that this could be a zone-by-zone situation. You know, make it a ballot vote. If people want it in their zones, allow them the privilege of speaking, especially when we are representing an entire city right now. This will impact an entire city. It will definitely impact the beach side. And this is the area that we call the jewel, the jewel, our beach, our forgotten beach. Why is it not improving? What can we do? Some people would suggest that by having ADUs, you're actually improving property values. We have them now. Property values have not gone up at all, and we have them now. So that is Zone 3. Thank you so much for giving me the courtesy. Don't expect any applause at all.
There was someone who did write to me and suggested that they vote zone-by-zone for having this or not.
I don't have any appetite for that, but, you know, we don't live in a city that's zone-by-zone. We live in a congruent city that I don't see us as being divided. And I don't vote according to the number of emails or calls that I receive. And people that I respect greatly line up on both sides of this issue. Ms. Remark, who sent this diatribe that all of us received, who was a former commissioner, is opposed to this idea. And I have the greatest respect for her, particularly when it comes to issues of planning and zoning. She's literally an expert in that. She's opposed to it. But there are many reasons to be opposed to it and many reasons to be for it. We simply have to vote according to our conscience, but I didn't hear some overwhelming number of people reach out to me and say that they were opposed to it. I don't feel that it's just overwhelmingly for it. I feel that it is one of those issues that make us what we are when we're up here. You're pulled. It's what this business is about. People are constantly pulling you in two different directions, and you have to find something that is reasonable in your decision. And I think what staff has presented, in my opinion, is excellent. I think that they did a good job of trying to cover, to ensure that these are, that if you choose to go down this road, you'll have a high-quality ADU that is well-done, that is congruent with the property that it is attached to, that the homeowner, there has to be a homeowner in one of those properties. I value that. So we're not trying to create some situation where people are just plopping properties down, and then it's limited, the number that you have. Now, I have a relative who has a property that I was thinking, man, they could put three ADUs on that, but now that I listen to the, you know, what's going on, I realize that that couldn't happen and probably wouldn't be what the neighbors would want. So I think we have, you know, a great proposal before us, and the way that this lands, I think what we have to do, and staff has to do, because we say we don't have enough code enforcement, this is something that we've asked for. When I first, when I was first elected as mayor, we had a lot less code officers than we have now. And we have ratcheted up code to a new level. So let's stop complaining and saying that our code is not doing a good job. Maybe they may be worked, but we all have to work. And I don't apologize to people for having to work. And if the numbers show that we have to find some more money to get another officer or two, then that's what we do. But if you go to a job like I go to, you have to grind. That's part of the American dream to me, grind until you get where you want to go. So if there's, do we have any other comments? There are no further comments, we were prepared to entertain for a vote. Commissioner Reed?
You know, I didn't, it didn't really matter to me either way, as we talked about this. I wanted to just hear what was going to be said prior to making a decision. But I think about the young woman, the young lady that came up who doesn't want to live with her mother, and I think about single individuals who are looking for somewhere to stay. And you have to admit, the rent that we have now in Daytona with these apartments that we've approved, it's absolutely ridiculous. I couldn't live in one. I couldn't afford to live in an apartment, and I own a house. It's really ridiculous. We have to, sometimes you got to step outside of your comfort zone to bring about change. And if it's already somewhere else and it's not working, then we need to fix that, just that simple. Because if that problem is already somewhere else and we're about to bring this situation to the entire city, then we need to fix what the problem is. However, I think that people needing somewhere to stay is imperative. You know, I was just telling with the manager the other day that one of the parks in my zone, people have started to sleep in the park again. They need somewhere to stay. Now, whether they can afford somewhere to stay or not, I don't know, but we need to help people find somewhere to stay. And so when I think about this, and I'm listening to what all Dennis presented tonight in regards to what our governing rules are saying, who wouldn't want this? And if it doesn't work, then we need to fix it. It's just that simple. We just need to fix it. And I agree with you in regards to, maybe we need more code enforcement officers. If we're going to be asking them to adjudicate these rental properties, just like we do the others, and we're already overwhelmed with some of our properties, we're going to be getting rental fees from these rental properties, let that go towards code enforcement, determining whether or not those properties are up to par. We want people to have somewhere decent to stay, somewhere clean to stay, somewhere for them to go and feel as if they have a home, regardless of how large, how small, whatever. I remember when I was in grad school, I lived on top of a barber shop. There were two apartments. There was a barber shop and a beauty parlor downstairs. There was a door in between them, and I lived on top of the barber shop. And it was like a little, what would you call them back in the day, shotgun? If you came through, if you came through a window, it was a shotgun apartment. Because once I came in through the side door, my living room was here, I don't know what this room was, I just made it something. Then I had a little bit of kitchen, a little bit of bedroom, a little bit of bathroom, but you know what? It was mine. I negotiated with the man that I will go there and clean it, to save some money, because I was a grad student. You know, nobody's going to clean it like I'm going to clean it. So if you'll take some money off of my move-in responsibilities, I'll go and clean it myself, and I'll move in there. I had a little bit of gas stove, a little bit of footed tub that had a PVC thing around it for my shower curtain to hang on. But you know what? It was mine. I kept it clean. I dressed it up. It was mine. So I think these individuals will make wherever we provide for them a home, but they need somewhere to go. It's just that simple. It may not be the answer for everyone. It may not be the answer, but it will be a solution to some of the situation that we're dealing with. And that's how I feel about that. I will be for this this evening.
Okay. All right.
You know, I keep, I sit here and I hear people talking about it'll be affordable and that sort of thing. We have an idea of what a one-bedroom apartment would cost for rent. Nobody has said anything about what these ADUs will rent for specifically, especially on the beach side, when you start looking at location, location, location. Maybe on the mainland, some of the other areas, but when you start talking about an ADU in a neighborhood on the beach side, within a block or two of the beach, you don't know what you're going to get as far as tenants, and you also don't know what that rent's going to be. So to rah 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 about how affordable they will be, we don't know that yet. And we won't know that until they're built, and then you see what's happening and what happens to the neighborhood. I know when I was campaigning, it was somewhere between two or three to one against it. I have older people that live in older neighborhoods, and they have been through a lot of changes over the years, with living on the beach side, even back to when single-family homes were cut up into two or three apartments, and we fought for 20 years to get rid of a lot of those and get the riffraff out, bring those back up to single-family, and now we're talking about going back to ADUs. I have to represent the most people that contacted me when I was campaigning, and by phone and that sort of thing, and I can't see my way to saying yes. If you have an existing ADU, I think you should be allowed to rent it, but to construct new ones, I'm not for.
All right. No, that's the last comment? All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those who are in favor of it, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-2.
I think I heard 3-4.
Oh, Ruth?
4-3.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. 5-4-3. Split vote, should have taken a roll call vote. Motion carries 4-3.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9B. This is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Hillwood Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statute in relation to 211 plus or minus acres of land generally located approximately 1,200 feet southeast of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and Bellevue Avenue, amending the future land use map designation of 101 plus or minus acres of the subject property from city commercial amusement to mixed use, amending the future land use designation of 110 plus or minus acres of the subject property from Volusia County Activity Center Industrial to mixed use, amending the future land use element Neighborhood Q Development Policy with regard to the subject property, repealing all ordinances or parts of notices in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Some of.
We have a motion and a second.
And I do have Mr. Mark Watts here for any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Oh, okay. I was looking for him. Okay, no questions for you. Good to see you, Mr. Watts. Do you have a question of it?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. This is the property that is rumored to be Amazon. Is that correct?
I believe that's what articles in the paper have said. This is property that, for the record, Mark Watts with Law Firm of Cobb Coal, 231 North Woodland Boulevard Deland. Property is currently owned by Event Equipment Leasing and Southern Pay and Nursery. And so what we're doing here with this application tonight is asking to consolidate the land use. Right now, it's mixed between two separate land uses.
I understand, but it would be helpful if we knew why we were changing the land use.
Because right now, you've got two separate land uses, and so one of them is a county land use classification, the other is a commercial amusement classification under the city. And so we're asking to go to the mixed use because I think it provides for consolidated planning of the overall property.
I sure would like to know what I was voting about.
Yeah.
Right now, it's that land use change. So it doesn't get into any of the specific uses, it's just the policy under the comprehensive plan, whether it's treated under the existing Volusia County classification and the commercial amusement classification, or unified under the mixed use classification. And then what we'll have following this, we also have a PUD that's, application that's pending, that will come in and put a mix of uses in place that, again, puts consolidated standards in place where you currently have a split of different zoning classifications and land use classifications.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Let me put my cart before the horse. If, you don't want to tell us what you're doing or what's going to happen with the land once we change it, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to ask us to change it when we don't know what we're voting for.
Your, your comprehensive plan defines uses for the city. And so what we're doing is, is trying to fit within your comprehensive plan. That defines what the uses are. I think what your question is about is who's the user? And that's never addressed in, in your comprehensive plan. That's not something you address through land use. So I'll defer to your, your counsel and planning staff on that.
Thank you.
And I would agree with those statements, yes, of course.
I think, I think, you know, when you get to 10B is where you want to get the question too. But you get to 10B, I think is where you'll, you'll get to your question, but you do have a right to try to ask them. But normally with land use, it is what it is.
And this is just the comprehensive plan?
That's correct.
This is sort of the high-level land use planning. We get more specifics when we get to the PD-type approval and that will be upcoming.
Correct.
You're not going to tell me, so here we go.
Yeah. Thank you.
He's going to tell you, 10B. Okay. 10A?
Or, we need, so we still need, we have a motion and a second on nine B. So we just need to vote.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Who's the motion from?
Commissioner Cantu and a second by Commissioner Henry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Who, who's that? Trager and Strickland?
Strickland.
All right, motion carries five, two.
I feel like, like he does. I don't think it's fair to ask us to vote on something that we don't know what's supposed to be going into it.
Okay. And you know what? I recognize that. And that'll be a third then. I'll be the third vote on that. I agree with that. So you're changing your...
We already voted. I don't, do we have to go back and re-vote? Can't do that.
The votes were made, there could be a motion to reconsider, I suppose.
Okay. I don't want to cause you to vote in a way that you don't want to vote. So we'll entertain a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
All right. It's the pleasure of the commission to accept this motion, first motion and the second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion to reconsider passes seven, zero. Yeah, we're going to reconsider it. All right. Do I have?
Retake the main.
We'll retake the, the main vote.
This is the pass ordinance.
Roll call.
Okay. This is for nine B and this is the pass ordinance on first reading. Commissioner May?
No.
Commissioner Cantu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Trager?
No.
Commissioner Strickland?
No.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes four, three. And for the record, the public hearing is set for February 2nd, 2022. Okay. We're now going to move on to item nine C. It is the Public Works Technical Services Division, Mentoclore Subdivision Preliminary Platte Approval. This is a resolution, quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary plat for the Mentoclore, a single-family residential subdivision on 260 plus or minus acres located north of LPJ Boulevard and immediately east of the Latitude subdivision and providing an effective date.
So move. Second. And I'd like to just make one comment. Okay, this is a preliminary plat, because I heard some rumors out there. These 500 residential, actually, single-family residential units was approved November of 2020, actually be, right before I came on. So, but this is a preliminary plat and I just heard some rumors about this. These have been voted on already.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. There are no further questions. Motion was Commissioner Cantu. Second was Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, 14 South Halifax Redevelopment Beachside Gateway Residential Mixed Use, RDB3, rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the lands of Melo Code to rezone 0.1 plus or minus acres of property located at 14 South Halifax Avenue from redevelopment, beachside gateway residential, mixed use and residential professional to redevelopment, beachside gateway residential mixed use, repealing all orances or parts of orances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
We have no questions for Ms. Gao? Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second, or any other questions from the commission? All right, here are none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero.
And the public hearing is set for December 15th. We're going to move on to item 10B, the City Manager's Office, Project Tarpon Economic Development Agreement Resolution. A resolution approving an economic development agreement between the city and the company in relation to the company's proposed development and operation of a business on property located south of Bellevue Avenue, east of Williamson Boulevard and north of Bellevue Avenue, providing for the city to pay the company an annual economic incentive grant for a period of five years in an amount equal to the percentage of the ad valorem taxes received by the city associated with improvements in tangible personal property located on the project site, subject conditions, including a minimum project investment of $175 million and the creation of at least 1,000 new jobs at the project site, having an annual wage of at least $31,200 plus benefits, authorizing the mayor and the city clerks to execute the agreement, authorizing the city manager to implement the agreement and providing an effective date.
So move.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Cantu and we'll take the second from Commissioner Reed. We have a presentation from Commissioner, from Deputy Chief Drew Driscoll.
And Fire Chief and whatever else comes up of, of the day. Thank you this evening. Go ahead and turn it on. Tonight, we're discussing economic development agreement for a project known as Project Tarpon. I'd first like to start by recognizing and thanking Keith Norden and Heather Schuberg from Team Volusia. They are economic development corporation partners that go out and solicit and look for new businesses to come to our community. And when they're not doing their, they're advertising the community of Daytona Beach as a positive place to live, work and play. This evening, I want to give a very brief overview about economic development and the incentives for this item that you'll understand the, there's been the veil of mystery, so to speak, from Florida Statute 288.075. Florida is a business-friendly state and many businesses like to remain, keep their identity anonymous. They have proprietary information that they wish to protect, also other trade secrets that they wish to protect. And that's just a standard business practice throughout the state of Florida. I believe Attorney Bob Jagger has given you information about the confidentiality agreement. And if you have any questions about that, I would defer it to Attorney Jagger. As far as economic development incentives, they are a common practice used throughout all levels of government. Their purpose is to encourage businesses to locate to our community, to increase tax base, grow jobs, increase property value and also economic diversification. A diversified local economy, in this respect, it's a, that diversification between the business community and a residential community. If you're too high on the residential factor, that increases the millage rate to bring in the same amount of revenue. So you want to have a fair balance between both commercial and residential. For instance, there's a, a city within Volusia County that has a millage rate of 7.85 compared to Daytona Beach millage rate of 5.53, though we bring in roughly the same amount of ad valorem tax. And that's primarily due to that mix of residential versus commercial that we have here in Daytona Beach, making us a well-balanced location. For economic development incentives, I personally view it as seeds that we plant. Here in Daytona Beach, we've planted several speeds that, seeds that have been, been very fruitful for us. You see Tamoca Town Center, One Daytona, Brown and Brown, Hard Rock Hotel, but the fruits that we've received, $25 million Riverfront Esplanade, the growth we see out west, entertainment, housing, jobs, increased property value, new tax base, maintaining our millage at the lower rate that it is today. Types of economic development incentives include the deeding of land, construction or reimbursement for public improvements, upfront financial assistance, bonds, employment grants, tax credits, tax abatement, and in this case, tax increment incentives. Many of our residents might be familiar with this slideshow that we've used before, but just to simply demonstrate what the tax increment is. Here we have a property, a building on a piece of property and the current tax rate is $20,000 a year. That sets our base value. A developer comes in and develops new properties, new improvements on the property, and the new tax bill is $620,000. Roughly those new constructed structures, the property improvements, that equals our tax increment. So if we take the new tax bill, subtract out that base value, that sum is the actual tax increment that we're talking about. Any questions so far?
In other words, they would still pay the amount that they're paying now.
Yeah, so with tax increment, it's beautiful and the fact that the city is not giving up advanced dollars. We're not going into the city's coffers and incentivizing someone to build.
And they're still paying some.
Yes, we are using the money that they pay us and returning it to them. In this case, that we'll talk about the deal point shortly, we're actually still receiving revenue as a result of this agreement.
I just wanted everybody to kind of understand that.
And to put everyone, unveil them of the mystery, Project Tarpon is an Amazon fulfillment center. This is 20, $200 million investment in our community, a 2.8 million square foot structure. So just to give some perspective on that, Trader Joe's main distribution center is 525,000 square foot. Volusia Mall is 844,000 square foot. The new Deltona Distribution Center along I-4, that's 886,000 square foot. This is 2.8 million square foot of floor area within a five-story building. So that is roughly the footprint of the existing Trader Joe's building. So if you've seen Trader Joe's, this is the same approximate footprint, just five floors up. In the Amazon line of facilities, this site is considered a first mile center. Then, of course, they have the middle mile. And as we may be familiar with, in Daytona Beach, we have a last mile center that's located out at approximately the Tanger outlets. To give you a brief summary of the incentive, it is for a term of five years. Their minimum requirements are $175 million in investment value, 2 million worth of square foot site improvement, 1,000 new jobs and a 20-year lease agreement. Within the incentive portion, you see that it is an amount equal to the ad valorem tax that is derived from the project and received by the city. It is not coming out of existing city funds, it is only from the funds derived from this property. And here you'll see in years one and two, 75% of the tax increment that we just explained would be returned to the company. In years three and four, 50%. And in year five, 25%. This has, we placed a cap for a maximum of $4 million benefit for the company. Currently, the cumulative benefit is just over $3 million. Here, just so we understand the dollars and cents of things, the table before you is a good faith estimate based on the Volusia County property appraisers' good faith estimate they provided us. The improved property values in the green section are shown with a 2% annual increase. Over the five-year period of time, the company is anticipated to receive approximately $1.7 million. The tangible property values in the teal section, over the five-year period, oh, I'm sorry, in the teal section, this is shown with a 5% depreciation in value, the tangible, of course, being the equipment, the machinery within the facility. Over the five-year period, they're estimated to receive $1.2 million. And in the, highlighted in the yellow on the screen, you'll see that the estimated benefit to the company is just over $3 million. And of course, we still have that $4 million cap. But what is in it for the city? Here, I outlined the city benefits. Over the five-year term, the estimated city benefit shown here in yellow is over $2.4 million. So this is truly a partnership between the private and public sector, increasing our tax base and giving us additional revenues for things such as road and hopefully firefighters. Just saying. You got to throw it out there, come on. But if you see here in the, in the neon green color, after the completion of the term of the agreement, this estimated, again, just estimated, one, over a million dollars annually would be placed into the city coffers from the property tax received on the property. Again, these are just estimates based on the current millage rate of 5.53. That obviously is up to you, how that goes up and down. Here's just a quick refresher of the 3 million incentive to the company and the nearly 2 and 1/2 million that would be received by the city through our estimations. But everything we do, of course, isn't about the bottom line and the dollar. For this project, it offers 1,000 new jobs. A new job is not taking people from the Deltona site, bringing it here. A new job is 1,000 new jobs at the facility. It's important to note that this is just the minimum. Their, their minimum entry-level salary, the minimum threshold defined in the agreement is $31,200. Of course, we know there's going to be supervisors and CEOs and everything else that are making much greater. For their minimum entry-level employee, they'll have access to full-time benefits, including health, dental and vision, paid parental leave, and their newest program is a career choice program. What that is, is 95%, the company will prepay 95% of the tuition for people who want to go to school. And so this is people who either wish to advance within the company itself, or if they wish to go into another field outside of the company. If they want to become a nurse, a teacher, a police officer, they could get their tuition paid for as a benefit from the company. That's just, I, I found that to be a great enhancement as a way to help elevate our company, our citizens. As we know, education is very expensive and it also goes for vocational training. They have the retirement benefits, short-term, long-term disability and basic life insurance also. When we talk about diversification of our economy, we also have to talk about diversification of our employments. During the past pandemic, or the current pandemic, I should say, that our hospitality, our restaurant workers, they were heavily impacted when we shut down the economy. Distribution centers such as Amazon, not only did they remain open, but they hired half a million extra workers to meet the demand. So through that diversification, we could ensure that our residents not only have access to an employer that has benefits that greatly exceed many companies in our area, but opportunity for education and opportunity to be sustained during future shutdowns, should that occur. Just a point, unemployment in Daytona Beach for last quarter was 6.4% or 2,083 people. Volusia County in Florida are 4.8% and the nation is 5.2%. These 1,000 jobs would go to people. I came upon a... I came upon an article, or an article was shared with me about a paraprofessional in our school district that is actually sleeping in a vehicle. I believe they were awarded the paraprofessional of the year, and they sleep in a vehicle because their salary brought them to, I think the article estimated $22,000 to $23,000. Their entry level is above that. And again, that's just the entry level.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said 1,000 jobs, but I would think it would create more than 1,000 jobs because they'll be hiring contractors as well, and the contractors will be hiring employees.
You're absolutely correct. The 1,000 is that minimum threshold. If I were to look at the Deltona site, I know during surge times of year, they've hired upwards of 2,500 people. And that's a much smaller, a half-sized facility.
Thank you. And one more question. I heard, I don't know, that's why I haven't heard you say it, maybe I'm jumping the gun. But the county will also receive about $2.74 million for infrastructure and roads?
Yes, there is a roadway going through, yes.
Thank you.
Correct, yes, that is correct. And so I think when we, earlier we talked about comp plans and what Daytona Beach wants to be. I think this vision is finally coming to fruition, at least with this one property. But it's important to note the ancillary businesses that will come from this. I could envision that whole area built out with jobs. I know 31,200 is not what we target. It is a base level. And hopefully, the new industry, as we continue to pursue space industry-type things and technology centers, will see greater salaries.
And I love this project. I think it's going to be great, it's going to put us on the map. I have one thing I would like to discuss, though. There's three entrance to it, okay? And Bellevue is perfect. And I drove down it today, it's all in, you know, businesses. I saw tons of waste pro going down that road, lots of trucks. And Williamson, I think, will be okay. The only problem I had, and I was told, and I'm not sure if this is true, the Bevel entrance is right across from Pelican Bay. You know, we fought for that light because a lot of people were having trouble getting out of there. You live in Pelican Bay.
Yes.
So I'm hoping that entrance is going to be for employees only because we will have a rough time getting in and out of there with all those vehicles.
Yeah, and it is definitely the vision of this complex, not just this company or this site, that helped bring that light. And that's why they stubbed out the road in advance. There are traffic studies produced, and that will come back to you when the PD formally comes back. But my understanding that the lower traffic count or the worker traffic count is the Bevel Road and any of their...
The Bellevue?
Bevel Road. And then on Williamson would most likely be the outlet for the trucks and other industrial equipment.
Do we know that for sure? I mean, when that comes back? Or can that be put in the PD?
They have a traffic count. I don't know that plan, what their traffic plan is far as routing. That is just my understanding, so I don't want to give you any factual information. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Yes. On the Southern Hay, it's approximately $900, a little over $900. Ag exemption.
$900 a year for that whole piece of property?
Agricultural exemption through the state of Florida grants, yes.
Okay, what's the anticipated tax for the first year of operation?
I'll take you, but on this proposal here, we'll see in year one, with the estimated value of $112,000. 75% is that, is 464. Throw in another 25%, we're probably in the neighborhood of 600 and change. And then on the tangible prop side, you'll see 90,000 in value, bringing in 376,000, so perhaps 500,000.
Okay.
And we could, as I showed, at least in year six, if we want to deduct 2% per year and gain 5% in appreciation, it's approximately a million dollars for the year-six tax revenue.
All right. You've got 1,000 jobs, $15 an hour. Is that the guaranteed minimum of 31.5? Is that going to be tied to inflation? Or any cost of living index over the four-year period?
It is not tied to a cost of living index, but that is the minimum threshold for the number of employees.
All right, those are going to be 1,000 full-time direct hires? One person, one job? Are there going to be full-time equivalents?
They are full-time positions, so position A. Yeah, position A, if someone left after six months and a new person filled that for the remaining six months, you would have that one position, one full-time position.
But only under that condition would we have full-time equivalents? You wouldn't hire, so they didn't have to say, provide the access to these benefits, be able to hire one person to work 20 hours a week, another person to work 20 hours a week, therefore neither one of them qualifies for any benefits.
As a part?
Yes. Yeah, no, sir, it's not for the part-time count, which they do hire part-time workers also. It is truly only for the full-time people.
You said they have access to benefits.
Yes.
Are those, is that just access or is that company-paid benefits?
There are, just like the city of Daytona Beach, there are company-paid benefits and...
I know what you're saying. But nowadays, they use, they use different techniques not to have to pay the company portion of that. And if you want it, it's available to you, but you have to pay out of your own wages. I'm asking, will that be the case, that you have to pay most of it yourself? What will be the company contribution for those benefits?
Not speaking for the company itself, but from my understanding, a single person is approximately $90 a month. I pay 100 something a week working here. I have full family, so in full transparency, that's a full family. No, we have great insurance. I think it's 18, less, about $20 a week.
Two more questions and I'll shut up. Number one, Jeff Bezos owns his company, right? And he one of the most, and he one of the richest men on the planet?
I don't know if he's still the owner or invested partner. I believe there was a change, but I understand he's a wealthy gentleman.
It's one of the most financially profitable companies in the United States today, correct?
I believe they're very financially stable, yes, sir.
In closing, I would ask this question. 23.4% of the people that live in this city live at or below the poverty line of about 70,000. Why in the world are we going to give a company that is that strong financially $4 million?
Upwards of $4 million, yes. And that is a decision of the commission. That's why we bring forward these items for you to discuss, of course. But we know the 2019 median wage, I'm sorry, the per capita income within Daytona Beach in 2019 was $24,300, and the median household income was $35,000.
According to federal guidelines, 31.5 per person, one person qualifies for housing at about $780 a month, according to the federal formula. We're not getting a really good deal there on wages because we're already worried about affordable housing. We were just talking about it.
Thank you.
Your defense against the project?
I'm just asking him questions.
Okay, well...
I would like to say something about incentives, is that okay? Okay, they've been doing this for at least 100 years. All big corporations, from Walmart to Publix to Amazon to, I mean, I can go on. Windexy, everywhere they get incentives, or they just go elsewhere. I might give you a few examples because I looked it up myself. Council approves Windexy incentives at Gateway Town Center in Jacksonville. Incentives for Publix to locate in southwest Birmingham. Jefferson County finalized tax incentives for future Publix distribution center. Publix gets $3 million tax break to site store in downtown Fort Myers. Athens City Council approves tax incentive for a new Publix. Amazon will get up to $2.2 billion in incentives for bringing new offices and jobs to New York City, Northern Virginia, Nashville, Tennessee. This is something that's been going on, you learn in high school, first year of college, it's economics 101.
Let me counter that right quick. There's only one I-4.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it.
95.
Wait, 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 hold it, hold it. Wait, wait until I recognize you guys. Do we have any more questions of Mr. Driscoll? Because I don't want him to be in the middle of our discussion while I want us to...
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Lay it on out there, but I don't want him, do we have any more questions of Mr.?
And for the record, I do have two speakers that want to speak on this.
Okay, we will hear from them. But before we get to the speakers, do we have any more questions of Mr. Driscoll? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Are we doing any other incentives? Are we waiving impact fees?
No, ma'am. It is just this incentive that you see before you this evening.
And is there any concern about the housing of these 1,000 employees? Or are we getting them from the Daytona Beach area?
No, and that's the benefit, is that with 1,000 new jobs, especially within this price range that we discussed, it is envisioned that these are local employees, so they would not grow the population. Whereas if we were to bring in the equivalent in ad valorem tax, it would take approximately 1,100 of my homes. So that's another 2,300 population. So there are new, no new residents anticipated from this.
And you said there were no increases in wages tied to inflation or anything?
That is correct.
And they're being paid $15 per hour?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's a full-time, one-person, full-time employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Part-time employees are being paid?
I don't know if they're on a different scale or is 15 their minimum regardless of position? Full-time is established based on the hours worked, which per the agreement is greater than 35, which is qualifying as full-time.
And these can be 1,000 full-time positions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, are we having any performance bond or anything? And this is a time for five years, it's going to be built out?
This is a five-year in there. I'm sorry.
She's asking how long it will be built out? Is that your question? Go ahead.
Yes, this is a five-year agreement, but their anticipation is to begin construction late next year and open for business 2023.
The agreement actually requires completion. There is a completion date in the agreement.
December 31st, 2023?
Exactly.
Yes.
And if they don't do that, is there any performance bond or anything so we don't get in like we got in those two hotels?
There's no performance bond, but they wouldn't be entitled to get the grant.
Correct.
I'm sorry?
There's no performance bond, but they would not be entitled to receive the grant if they don't meet the performance requirement.
That's how I thought I read it.
Yes.
Could you review what our median income is and the per capita income again? I think you said that our per capita income is $24,500.
And my source of the information is from the U.S. Census Bureau, their 2019 Quick Facts, which is currently posted online.
Okay.
It's also established using ACS data. Daytona Beach 2019 per capita income for a 12-month period was $24,360, with a median household income of $35,893.
For the record, could you, 30, what's the median, 35 what?
35,893.
All right, and what is the difference between median income and per capita income?
So for the per capita, they take our labor pool and take the average salaries and divide it amongst the people, and it arrived us at the 24,000 and change.
All right, and the median household, that's operative word.
Yeah, and of course, then we have a household. We could have two combined workers living within a household. And within the median, within the middle is the 35,893.
Okay, so the reality is that if you had two people working, they worked at Amazon, it would change the median household income substantially.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
And if I would divide that by a third, giving us approximately what we look for within rental rates, that's, that family should be able to afford approximately $1,700 in monthly rent, if that helps.
Yeah, I just, thank you for clarifying, I just wanted that for the record. Okay, we have two speakers. Are there any other questions of Mr. Driscoll before we hear from our speakers? And then we'll go back to...
I'll remain here.
Okay, thank you.
First speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Good evening, everyone. Drew reminds me every time I stay in his workload doubles. So I would say this, we definitely are in support of the project, but I just want to add for the conversation purposes is that there's people living in the city of Daytona Beach that have been here for 10 years that cannot afford to fly out of the airport. There's people here that cannot afford the average rent in the city of Daytona Beach. And so what I want to bring to the table is the deeper conversation is, as this project grows, to make sure that we're not coming on the back end, trying to make sure they have transportation to this particular location. It's county and city. Please make sure that the Voltrans system is going to be applicable to those 1,000 people that we're looking to hire. We already said housing is the issue. Hopefully, this will be a burden easter to that situation. But what I don't want us is to sit here and then wait for the project to be here and then discover that our residents are not qualified to even work there. So I'm looking to see if there's a partnership with the Volusia County Schools or the community colleges that we have to get these employees ready for the next two years. What classes should these residents be taking? Is there scholarships available? Can we get into a particular place to where we're feeding the projects rather than letting the projects come here? And people from New Smyrna and Orange City and Ormond driving to our city and been taking these jobs when these jobs could be taken by residents here in the city of Daytona Beach? There is transportation issue, there's education issues. And I want to make sure as a city that we're looking at all of our residents to get them prepared for all of the great things that are coming to our city. And that's all I want to say.
Could you please address the issue of a job fair or two issues that I think should be brought to light?
Again, Drew Driscoll, deputy city manager, fire chief. Within conversations with the company, they do traditionally, and they do intend on hosting or participating within job fairs. I am aware that they do also hire previously incarcerated people. And looking at the plan that's available online as has been posted, they do anticipate bus service, which of course is based on demand.
Yeah, and you're told that they do hire formerly incarcerated people?
I have been told that, yes, sir.
Okay, that's important, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Earlier this evening, I was at this site. Went to a meeting at DME. It's the same site, it's been the same site for 40 years that I've been here. Hasn't changed, all right? As I said, paying $900 a year in taxes because it's NASCAR. I happened to be at the meeting when Smith changed the land usage to agricultural. They did the same thing north of Clyde Morris. So they benefited tremendously at the city's expense. Now NASCAR is now going to rent this, and we're only going to get an additional $500,000 a year. But it doesn't seem like a lot of money, but wait until the five years ends. That building is going to be there, and it's going to be a million or $2 million, depending on the cost and the price of land. So $2 million a year is not to sneeze at. Now, we went through this years ago, and it constantly comes up. It's the city's money, why are we giving away money? Well, we did that with TIF funds on the beachside. We were in really terrible shape on the beachside. And we created the CRA. And that CRA took this property, which was value, relatively valueless. So the hotel across from me went on the market for $57,000. Okay, so the three properties came out to a little over half million. They put a half, a $100 million property, Ocean Walk and Wyndham, on the property. Wyndham alone pays a million dollars in taxes every year. And then when the CRA vanishes, that million dollars plus... that million dollars plus will go into the city coffers. So it's only five-year period. And that huge amount of money that we would not normally get, because we went forty years with nine hundred dollars a year. What can we do with an extra million bucks a year for the general fund? Thank you.
And our final speaker on this item is Ann Ruby.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. First of all, let me say, I am in favor of this deal as a tax, with the tax incentives. I understand that's how this is going to get done. I don't have a problem with that. I do have issues with some of these incentives. I've been told that is not an enforceable benefit. I've been told that the cost to an employee is ninety dollars per month. It's not an enforceable benefit. I've been told that is not enforceable. The healthcare plans they offer could be catastrophic healthcare plans, where there's a deductible of five or ten thousand dollars. That's an unaffordable healthcare plan for a worker making thirty-one thousand dollars a year. If you make fifteen dollars an hour, thirty-one thousand dollars a year, the rent you can afford is seven hundred and eighty dollars. That's not enough to live on. Twenty dollars an hour, twenty-two dollars an hour is what's needed here, and it should be pegged to a cost of living, to inflation. They're offering two hundred and fifty dollars in the first year, and a thousand only at the end of it. So I'm asking you, you can accept, accept the tax incentives, but put some enforceable benefits here, so that the people who are going to work there for thirty-one thousand dollars a year can afford the health insurance, can afford their rent, and stay healthy. I've been told that is not enforceable, and it should be very clearly stated that these jobs will not be through employment agencies, that one person is one job. There will be none of this, we're going to count two or three people working part-time as a full-time job, because that's, other deals you've done have, have been written that way. They've been written up and presented as X number of jobs, and when you get back into the reporting, when they're required by the state to report, what they're reporting on is full-time equivalents, which is different. So I'm asking you, please, put some enforceable benefits, put some accountability. Don't settle for "I've been told that," and please, make sure that the benefits that are offered are affordable on the wages earned. Thank you. And that the company contributes.
That was my final speaker for this item.
Mayor, if I could just respond quickly to that. Thank you. So the benefits are actually required in the agreements, the company's standard benefits, and although those may change from year to year, there is a link in the agreement to establish what the current benefits are. So there is some requirement, if you will, as to what the employees, those full-time employees will get.
Is there some sort of requirement as to how much the employees have to contribute?
I haven't gone to the website to review the benefits, but they are available, and they would be enforceable as part of this agreement. So I don't have the details in terms of what the actual, you know, employee benefit would be, and what they'd have to pay as part of that. But I know often there's a match for 401K, and for healthcare, and so on. But all that would be defined on their website, which is linked in as part of the contract.
Would it be in our, in the contract?
Yes, that is part of the contract.
And there's, there's no portion of the contract that highlights what inflation or the cost of living increased? They don't mention that in the contract?
No, but keep in mind, this is just a five-year agreement, and the thousand employees is actually ramped up over time. So the first year, it's two hundred and fifty, and it accelerates up to a thousand over five years.
Okay. Okay, we've heard from a few residents, and heard a presentation from Chief Driscoll. Comments? I mean, I'll start with you, Commissioner Strickland, because you were kind of, I don't want to interrupt your flow of thoughts.
My flow? I really don't have any flow, and I'm new here, and I'm sure I'm upsetting the apple cart a little bit. But you removed the incentives, and I like the project. I'm just not for, for giving away four million dollars of, and I know it's not money we have in hand, it's money that will be coming. But this town needs that money, and if we don't, if we give it to them, we'll have more people here, we're going to need more services, the roads, it's going to be more expensive. I just feel like that there's only one intersection of I-4 and I-95 that's very beneficial to this, to this corporation, this company that's wanting to come here. I don't think they'll go anywhere else. I'm willing to take that chance.
You might be right. Other comments? Anyone else? That's it? Commissioner Cantu, you were sort of interrupted. I don't want to. You good? Okay. All right, well, we have a motion, and we have a second. There are no additional thoughts. I will conclude with this. Our unemployment rate in Daytona Beach, he said, Drew said, was six point eight percent inside of Daytona Beach. I think he said Volusia County was something like four percent. We have employers in Daytona Beach who were hiring folks for eight dollars and fifty cents until minimum wage is increased to ten dollars. So one of the things and benefits that I would hope would come from this, when you get a thousand new employees that make fifteen dollars at a baseline, I have to remember, they're not giving us an average. The average of the employees could be twenty dollars. I, we don't know, and I don't care to estimate or guess at that. But one of the things that we want is to drive up the income of the people at the bottom, people who are making ten, twelve dollars an hour, and create, I hope, greater competition. This is not a scenario that is going to change. We haven't hit a goldmine or anything. I don't want anybody to think that, you know, tomorrow's newspaper should read that, you know, we've, this is not GE. You know, in nineteen sixty or sixty-two, GE came to Daytona Beach, and, you know, my mother worked at GE for thirty years. And she had great healthcare, and made a great living, you know. And, and it basically changed the trajectory of our household. We know that this is not GE, but it is an upgrade from twenty-four thousand per capita income. And the bottom line is that it's, it's one thousand wholesome, they're not enormous jobs, but they're wholesome. And, you know, in, in my house, you know, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have, have to have the value of work. That was a thing that, that my dad always talked about. Work has, all work is valuable. And so, yes, we want space industry jobs. But a lot of times I hear folks on the radio talk about who Daytona is, and stop trying to be someone that you're not. This is a part of who we are, and it should add to the overall menu of types of jobs that we have. And by all means, Mr. Norton, if you guys can bring in space industry jobs, and you have a, you want to work with our staff, we're, we're ready for those also. So pursue those, and, and thanks for your work and effort on this. If there's no further comments tonight, we'll go ahead and go.
I just have one other thing. Some of those contractors are paying a lot more than fifteen dollars an hour, because I know some of those contractors. I just want to let everyone know up there. And that's why I'm saying, it's going to bring in a lot more than a thousand jobs, and we need jobs.
Yeah, I agree, and we need jobs. And one of the things that we need is, you know, as a community, you know, I was listening to a show the other day, you know, where folks were doing a lot of complaining, and it's okay to complain, because I believe that a discussion about an issue is important. But I, I just don't want us to become a community that allows people who, who don't look at the Daytona Beach bottom line. A lot of people look at the Ormond Beach bottom line, and they try to apply that to Daytona Beach. One of the things we have to remember is that there is a difference in commercial property and residential property. And I'm not going to allow people from Ormond Beach and different areas who want to tell us, well, as Daytona goes, we go. I'm not going to allow them to tell us, you know, what we should be doing for the residents of Daytona Beach. So we have a motion, we have a second, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantu?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Trager?
Yes.
Commissioner Strickland?
No.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Yes. Motion carries, six, one.
And that was our final item on the agenda tonight.
All right, we will move to commission comments, and we'll commence with the Honorable Commissioner May.
I so appreciate seeing residents out this evening. You know, hopefully they'll come back again. I love their points of view. I love that they stand up for what they believe in. And I know that other residents will now be weighing in and standing up for what they believe in. I look forward to listening. So, a couple of issues, and I'm just wondering when I can get some response on it. One of them is speeding on Peninsula. I had a gentleman contact us a while back, and we put out a speeding kind of monitor on Peninsula between ISB, and I want to say maybe Vermont, around there, that area.
I just sent to you an email, because I don't have any.
No worries, I'm just putting it on the record. And then also had a resident contact me regarding repaving Braddock, but it would be the portion close to the river. There's a little tailpiece right there, and the road is, it's a little bit odd. And they were wondering if we could, a resident contacted me about that, maybe take a look at it.
Repaving?
An area on Braddock, the part closest to the river. There's two parts, Peninsula, Braddock West, Braddock East, it's on the east side.
It's only approved.
If I could get that, I mentioned that we had that, and I wanted to know where we were on that. Also, I received an email, which I forwarded to you, with regard to speeding behind the water park, and requesting what they could do to get the, they have about seven families with kids back there. Some are pretty young, going to elementary school, a couple of toddlers, and they wanted to know if we could reduce the driving, which is right by the water park, right? So you've got lots of families back there, going to the park, to a slower speed, if possible, and what we had to do to get that done. I will tell you that I did visit the, the Bubba Front Park this week, and I will tell you from, from the, I was in a golf cart. This week I'll be running it. And in the golf cart, I'm telling you, I was seeing things, and I thought, was that always there? Was that view or that promenade always in that spot? I actually couldn't remember. So when you finally see it unveiled, it'll be like a completely different, transformed experience for you. And I can see how it's going to impact Bee Street, but the entire city, I think, will be coming into that particular area. So I'm pretty excited, but super progress, great progress. I'd like to know, please, if I could get an email sent to me with regard to some requests dealing with the grant programs we have in Midtown, as well as the downtown area. I'd like to know how much money is left, when it will be reloaded, where people can apply again. And I was told by the city manager that there's a waiting list. And I'd just like to know roughly, you know, how well was it utilized, over what timeframe? About a year ago, I asked Mr. Berger, were people accessing it, and was kind of what, you know, people aren't really accessing it. It seems now they are accessing it. And I'd like to have, if possible, I'd like to know the addresses. I want to go and take a look at what the improvements look like, given that facade grants were handed out. Also, in the downtown area, I'd like to have the same information for the businesses, to know how much money is left, to do some sort of grant improvements. An area of concern right now, and I spoke with a couple of merchants in this area, is the space between Ridgewood, heading east, and stopping at the bridge on ISB. Since we're improving the downtown area, I'm just wondering what plan we have for the ISB corridor that leads up to the bridge, that little tailpiece there, all those restaurants. It's a nice little walkable area, but when you look at the sidewalk, it is a hodgepodge of ten, fifteen, twenty years of patchwork all over the sidewalk. But it's getting quite a bit of usage on both sides. And also, that area floods. Every time we have a big rain, they flood terribly over there. I also would like to speak about the Ridgewood corridor. Do we have, at this time, a plan for the Ridgewood corridor? I've spoken before about the areas that South Daytona ends, then we have Daytona, and then we have Holly Hill. Do we have any kind of plan, or is there any desire to improve that major thoroughfare in there? Any thoughts on that at all?
I mean, you know, I'm just to opine, I always have thoughts of improving, but I got, we have a lot on our agenda. And for me, that's, that's not where I am.
Okay.
Doesn't mean I don't want to improve it, but.
That's good to know. That's good to know. Uh-huh, good to know. That's good to know. Okay, so I also would like to know.
Well, I want to make sure you, you know, you know what I, I mean, when I.
I don't. I don't know.
Just know that if you can come up with the funds, happy to approve, and happy to support it. But we've got a lot of things on our agenda that we're, you know, have a list.
Sure.
And so, you got a list, and happy to have it on the list.
Sure. So I mean, I have, I guess, driving from Holly Hill into Daytona Beach, you go on Ridgewood, you see some things. We have some crime issues that would definitely be impacted around the North Street area. I guess it's close to my heart, because Uptown is in my zone. So I see those areas all the time. Uptown, North Street, Mulberry, Taylor, they're all impacted by that Ridgewood corridor, and so improving it would make a huge impact to the residents in those areas. It's just a thought.
What would the improvement look like, though?
I'm unsure. That's, that's not my job. We have a great staff, and I'm thinking that they would most likely come up with some sort of plan on what we can do, and how we can improve the area.
Okay.
Is that a thought, that they would do that, or no?
That's, that's, yeah, I don't know what to say, that's between you and the staff. My, my position is this, it's our general job to come in with ideas, to agree upon those ideas. And then as we agree upon those ideas, we direct staff. You have to come in with an idea, and a plan, and a prescription. Some of that doesn't necessarily have to be cosmetic. You know, there are different ways to improve an area.
Okay.
And so, you know, you know me, when I come in, I kind of have a, have an idea, and I kind of lay it out and say, this is what I think. And so.
So then what I would like to know, then, if possible, I think that's fantastic. So then I guess I'd like to be able to work with staff to figure out with them what we can do to improve that Ridgewood corridor, and then possibly come in and speak to the commission and see if they think that that's a good idea. Keep in mind that as we head into V Park, as we head into some of these other areas, as we head into possible development going on the corner of Main Street, I went to a meeting for that, too, potential apartments coming downtown, people will be traversing that Ridgewood corridor. That will be a major area, turning right, turning left, anywhere you go. So those are my thoughts, but I would love to have the opportunity to work with staff and do some research, and then happy to come back with an idea. So thank you for that.
I didn't say, you know, about working with staff, because my point was, you come in with your idea, and then you, because we don't, we don't work with staff. We come in with an idea, we say, this is our idea. And then we say to staff, this is our idea, our idea, then we ask them to bring back what they think they could do to improve that.
I'm sorry, did, were you saying something to me? I missed, did you? I thought you were saying something to me, sorry. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
So, again, my point is, we come in, you come in with your idea to us. You share your idea, then we direct staff to say, this is what we would like. You come back with your idea, and they give us an idea, we say yea or nay.
All right.
And if you want another suggestion as you're working on this corridor.
Please.
I think you really should look at ways that the corridor can be improved, because from my perspective, a lot of it is not a cosmetic issue. It's a, it's an issue of we don't want to look at some of the people that are down there. A lot of the homeless people, and the people who are addicted to drugs, and, and a lot of things we see off the side streets, on North Street, those are the things that are really troublesome to people, from my perspective.
Right. Oh, I agree.
How can we sort of address those might be sort of.
Well, I'm hoping to have a conversation with the First Step Show. Well, I'm hoping to have a conversation with the First Step Shelter and hoping that maybe, you know, I can get some ideas from them also to see how we can work together because that area on North Street, it's a huge area of concern. And also I have some areas right on the corner of Magnolia. And when I say huge areas of concern, I don't want to give the impression that we are, you know, not safe because we're extremely safe downtown, but we do see some things down there. And that, I'm hoping the First Step Shelter and some of the initiatives that we already have will be able to be put in place. So I'm looking forward to that. And yes, I will definitely take the time to work on that. Thank you for your suggestion. Finally, I did get some calls about the tiny homes. And I'll be quite honest with you, some, I called some residents and I said, do you like it? Do you not like it? I want some follow-up and some feedback, what are your thoughts? And I will be straight with you, some of them said, we think it's good. And some of them said, no, we don't want it. And I said, fantastic. I don't care what the response is, could you please come to commission and say something? Whether or not you like it or don't like it, at least come forward and voice your opinion and let us know so that we can do something with the information or walk away from it. And that's really what I was trying to accomplish, was to get you to take a look at something and then weigh in on your own and come to commission. So thank you so much. And I think, let me think for a minute, because I don't want to come back. I do anything else this week? My weeks are pretty, pretty busy, I will say, my, my weeks are, oh, I did go to a meeting last night. Commissioner Strickland was there, we did not speak. And it was for the potential apartments coming to the downtown area. And I would like to, I wish more residents had been there. I really wish more residents had shown up to take a look at the potential of what could come this way. I wish they had. So thank you so much, but I enjoyed the presentation, it had value. Thank you.
It's great potential, you don't want to talk about the potential of that, that's a big deal coming to downtown possibly.
Yes, I've, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying. You know, and it's, I, I think the project is fantastic, but we do have some other issues. Right? So I'm listening to what you're saying about the other issues that we have. And so I kind of have to weigh, I'm enthusiastic about this project, but is the environment right for it? Right? I've got to think about that also. And so again, I'm most likely, you know, I, I wish I had seen more residents from the Uptown area, Beach Street area. So I will be visiting them and letting them know and showing them some of the concepts that they can expect. And it's going to impact their day-to-day living as well. But it's a, it's a fantastic, it's a, it's a pretty nice project.
Yes, it is.
I would like us to consider the flooding though, in that area. That'll make a difference there too. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Cantu.
I only had a couple things real quick. I had a TPO meeting, they are continuing. Hello? Are you guys done yelling? Can you hear me? Okay, there was a TPO meeting, just a few things. They are continuing resurfacing I-95 from south of Dunn Avenue to the airport road. And the estimate completion is summer of 2022. They are going to be starting here real soon is resurfacing 400, which is Bevel Road. And I'm very excited about that sidewalk going in. So hopefully that's going to be done. Actually, they're supposed to get back with me, I'm hoping that's going to be done around the same time. The, the LPGA and the bridge over there, the PD and E, they spoke today, was looking at probably at least two to three years. I think the design is actually going to start, why the PD and E is going on. We did find out today that the right-of-way, they did place a holder for a $7 million for 2027 for the right-of-way. And that's about it. One other thing, I want to thank Lou, Vern and Ted from Lady of Lords Veteran Outreach Group for donating $3,000 for, to the Veteran Museum. We really, really appreciate that. And Sue, thank you, Sue. Sorry. I want to say thank you because they do have to replace some carpet and we do need to do some fundraising and painting the inside, so we really appreciate it. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry?
No comments tonight.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir, I'll take some of her time. He's been looking at my list over here saying, I hope you're not saying all of that. And I said, well, the first half is what Dennis said, I was just writing it down, this is my part. Well, first of all, he's not here tonight. But when we come back in two weeks, we have to recognize our chief being our representative on the Volusia League of Cities. He is the employee of the year from the cities and he is being recognized. Of course, my first priority was to be here, but I should have been there to give him that award. And in January, I will be sworn in as the president of the Volusia League of Cities. Oh, Lord. That was supposed to happen tonight too, but I told him I had to be here. So we got to recognize chief, okay? The money that Commissioner May was asking in regards to the spending of those funds for Midtown, I'd like to know that information as well, what she addressed. I am loving that we are getting an app for the city of Daytona Beach. My church has an app, so I don't know why we don't have one. And speaking of that, in filling out my applications for the various events that I have coming forward, Mr. City Manager, can we make those forms fillable? Because as a commissioner, I'm finding it tedious that I've got to print it and handwrite everything that y'all want to know. I don't know why we're, they're not filling.
And I think by you saying that, Hassan is extremely excited because he is transitioning all of us and making many of us stressful. He doesn't want any paper to be going around, so many of those items will be online, except for the attorney's items. He, he, yeah, he, I'm not going to throw him under the bus. But Hassan, we're really trying to transition for many of our things to be done online.
Okay, very good. I want to remind you all that there is an education and community town hall this coming Tuesday evening at the Midtown Center. We have our little flyer that's in the manager's little handout. See my little picture? So we want to be there to hear from Tirti Small Palm Terrace, Campbell Middle School, Malin High School, the superintendent of schools. Our mayor is going to be sharing what the city is doing for our educational purposes. But these schools need help and they're asking us to come together as a community. It takes a village to raise a child. So we're coming together as a community to have a town hall meeting to say, how can we help those various institutions? Also, you know, on the 11th, we're going to have our, our annual Christmas parade. I think it's our second one since we revived it, right? And we've extended the route. I'm looking at you, Commissioner Cantu. You're the parade girl.
I know, you're looking.
She's looking at the audience like. All right, so we're going to do that. I also had my little personal ride in the golf cart on yesterday with immediate past Commissioner White. And I'm telling you, that park is going to be something else.
It is.
I am, ooh wee. It is going to be a destination, for real. I mean, there's going to be so much people can do. It, it almost reminds me of, of New York with the big park, what's the name of the park in New York?
Central.
Central Park. With the big redwoods and the palms and the Magnolias and they've added these sidewalks that take you different ways and different apparatus for you to do and a dog park that Weston can go to and play in and take over. So I'm excited about that. Roofing, I'm, I'm ready to say, let's, that my, my roofing little pilot that I've got going, I know we've got a list of individuals, Drew still here? I've asked about those that qualify that are on our waiting roofing list that are in my zone because my, my pilot program is for my zone, so I wanted to get on that so that we can start helping with those roofs with.
I don't, I don't think I understand what, what you're talking about.
They don't know about your.
We don't know about it.
Well, I have a pilot roofing program I'm doing with Habitat for Humanity. I mentioned this once before, but it took them two years to draw something up. But now that they know that we have money for roofs, they, they're asking to do something else. So whatever roofs in my zone that our, our COVID funds will assist, they are going to help me by painting the houses and also laying down some landscaping so that it looks more than just the roof, but that that home has a whole new look.
Why you didn't, why didn't you share that with us? I think.
I did, but I didn't, it just came out on what they were willing to do. I wanted them to put the roofs on there and to save our money. But when they, they came to our meetings and heard we had roofing money.
Yeah, well, I think that's a great idea and I'm, I'm very happy to hear about it.
Yeah, so I am too, so I'm ready to get started. These people, we've got what, about, I don't know how many names on this list, but there are a number. And I'm so excited that we can help this, help these individuals because our roofing list is always a long roofing list. And with the monies that we have, we may do, what, 40 roofs a year? If we do that many? But 20 roofs? I think we're going to be able to do 40 maybe, but we usually only do like 10 to 15.
We can do, I think, 65 with this money that we appropriated from ARCA funds.
Right.
It's, the roofs are about 15,000 and we might be able to do 60 to 65.
So I think we were vetting roofers because we, we said that we wanted to make sure that the roof was legit, that the companies were legit. We didn't want the homeowners to have to go through that whole process, we were going to take care of that. So I'm, I'm ready for that to start rocking and rolling. Mayor's Fitness Challenge, Mr. Mayor, you indicated there was going to be an interim little something, something. I started eating right today. So are you going to ever announce what the interim thing is? Are you going to wait until January when it kicks off again?
You should have received an email as a past participant.
She was locked out of her email.
Oh, she was?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
The, the basic issue is that between now and the kickoff in January, the person who maintains their weight or loses weight, because we want to incentivize people to continue to eat healthy through the holidays. So I think the winning prize will be 200 for the first place and 100 for a second place. So in other words, if I maintain my weight and you maintain your same weight because you lost, you two, you still lose. So, but if you go down, because we're trying to keep you to maintain. So you understand?
Yes.
All right, so the bottom line is, stay healthy, stay strong with it.
And lose some weight.
Lose some more weight, you'll win.
All right. My last thing is, is we are working on, we're trying to come up with a name, but I think right now it's going to be Midtown Holiday Extravaganza. I was asked by the business owners on Mayor McLoughlin Boulevard if they could have like a sidewalk sale or something. And you know, we don't do the sidewalk thing. So I spoke with the manager and the attorney in my private meeting yesterday. Was it private or is it my secret meeting? Yeah, my secret meeting. But we're going to block off Third Street. Third Street is the street in front of Daisy Stocking Park where people usually park. We're going to just block that part off so that we're not blocking off the main Mayor McLoughlin Boulevard. And the business owners are going to be on one side selling their wares, but we're going to open up so that citizens can sell their wares on the other side. You know, we used to have Light Up Midtown, Charles used to do all of that. And we didn't have, we didn't have anything since he's retired. So we wanted to do something for that area. People are suffering and everybody can't go to the store and buy something new. So maybe if a citizen has something that's slightly used or, I've got dresses in my closet with tags on them that I don't even like anymore, I'll bring them out there and sell those. But we want to have something for the citizens to do to, to bring that, that holiday spirit to the Midtown area. And we're looking at December 18th, so that's after the parade and everything, just to kind of keep that spirit going, that's the weekend prior to Christmas. So citizens, as we put this together, they have to bring their own table, their own chair, their own change. And we're going to make this happen.
And we would sell what? What would, just sell items that you want to sell?
Yeah, whatever you got, like a yard sale. But I want to call it yard sale, it's extravaganza.
Okay. Remind me, I'll try to come and bring some items I have.
And we're going to decorate the wrought iron fence to give it that holiday feel. We're going to have a city tent with some hot chocolate and they're going to reimburse me the hot dogs that, that we bought for the children.
And tell me this, why can't we do it on the sidewalks?
I guess because people got to walk and it's a little bitty sidewalk, it's not big, like Beach Street sidewalk. Because people would be in the street trying to walk down the sidewalk.
It's a, it's a better area between.
And then where would the citizens do their selling?
Between Daisy Stocking?
Yeah, that little.
Because it's wider and you can be. I just want to activate all of our spaces and activate the business.
Yeah, the businesses are coming. They're going to, they're the ones who ask for it.
All right, great.
They ask for it.
Good job.
So Commissioner Reed, I think it's a fantastic idea. I saw Ms. Moulton yesterday and I saw Ms. Karen yesterday also. I think it's a great idea. What about lighting? You know how we have on Beach Street, we have those little displays? Do we have anything extra that we could put there at all? You know what I mean?
We have extra lighting, for next year, I really want lighting, period.
I agree, I brought that up.
Because we found that, my garland going on, I love it. You know, the first time we did the garland, we only did it from Ridgewood to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. So then I said, you know, the people on the other side of the, deserve some garland too. So I was driving down Nova Road and I saw the light poles with the garland, I was like, whoa, look here. So now I'm going for lights for next year. A little late for lights for this year, we're on December 1. However, I did talk to staff today and we've got like three reefs left that were, that used to be downtown. We got some little stuff we're going to put on there, make that extravaganza, that holiday feel. It's coming together.
I'm looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to it.
That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Do you, can you go back over one of your points? I forgot, I wanted, oh, it was the one about the app. Before I come to you guys. The app, the app that we, that I discussed a few weeks ago about the Black Heritage Trail, we'll be able to tag on just as a point of clarification, which I'm excited about that, so it's coming at the perfect time. Yeah, I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
I had my ride today at the park. It is going to be magnificent. It's very well thought of and they've done a ton of work. And our driver was so enthusiastic, you couldn't help but feel very, very hopeful of it. And you couldn't wait to have it done with, so that you could see it. I had somebody ask me about a Nexus study, requirement for housing. Do we have that study and can we get a hold of it?
Study is not complete yet, it's still going through the process. But you all approved it and we have a consultant on, on hand and we will get a report back to you all.
Thank you. And we also heard about, well, a suggestion about getting a trolley like we had years ago from the beach side over to Beach Street. That this might be a, a way to alleviate some of the parking problem. And a lot of the people going to a strange city, they might not want to drive out of their comfort zone, but this would get them maybe over to Beach Street if we could look into that, on how that goes. And this is for Fred Brown, if he's here. Years ago, they put some pipes through, for some waste from, on the beach side, on the tail end of Bonafour Avenue, right off the river. I don't know if we have an easement on it or if we have a right-of-way on it or if that would be possible to be used as an access point for the neighbors of the Bridgeport area to have access to the river. It's at the end of the tail end of Bonafour Avenue. So I, I don't know if we have an easement, I don't know if we have a right-of-way, I don't know what. But anyhow, if, if we could find something that we could use that as an access point to the river, maybe it'd be working out. And thank you and everybody have a good evening.
First Step Shelter was mentioned a few minutes ago. We've got a $6 million building operating at 50%. The reason I was given that we're operating at 50% is we don't have the, the funds to operate at 100%. We have some serious issues with homeless around North Street, also on the boardwalk and around the pier. Stands to reason to me, we need to try to find some funds, recruit some donors. We have some very wealthy people in this community that could donate, still get a tax write-off whether they like homeless people or not. I would like to see that happen. I would like to see that happen. They're not going away. Seems to me they're, they're, you know, there's more every day when you go out. Depends on where you go. They just move around. You think they're gone. Drive around a little bit, you'll find them. If we could do that in the future to try to figure out a way to get maximum use out of the $6 million building, I think it would be a justifiable way to spend a few dollars to improve our city and, and improve the life of some people. You know, you're aware, I volunteer at the shelter a couple of days a week. Those folks need some serious help. Most of them are, are, you know, have mental issues and we don't have quite enough services to go around, I don't think. So, and, and the ones out on the street are, you know, are not even getting treated or medicated. So something to think about in the future. The downtown apartments, I like the, the apartments. I do have an issue with the TIF money, so much of it going to them. Because when we take TIF money that, that comes in and give it back to the developer, then we don't have anything to improve the rest of the CRA. I think that was the original intent of CRA funds, the baseline and the TIF fund, the TIF money, was to be able to fix up the part of, of a CRA that does, has no way of generating money other than what taxes are paid. So when you put a project in, instead of giving all of the TIF money away, couldn't we just use a portion of it for the surrounding area? Like over here with Malali and some of those streets behind Brown and Brown there. They could use a lot of help, but we don't have any TIF money because we always, not always, but sometimes we give most of it away or back to the developer. I'd like to see us, you know, work on the rest of the CRA, not just the single projects that come along. And the last thing. I know I have complete faith in our, in our city manager and I know he meets with a lot of people. And I know we're not supposed to know everything that goes on in his office and what's coming down the pike. But I would, when things are happening, before they get to the newspaper, please call us and let us know. I woke up to the thing about the firehouse the other day and I'm like, what's going on with the firehouse? You know? Tell me about the firehouse whenever we gonna have something in the paper, please. Pretty please?
Go ahead. No.
Go ahead.
He, 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 I don't even know if he, you know, you have to remember, a lot of things are ideas. And they're not in the manager's head as much as they. Exactly.
Now. You were quoting. You knew, did you know it was gonna be in there?
Oh, no.
Of course you didn't.
Yeah, and, and I'm just saying, you know, that, I think two years ago, some of the people contacted me about that and it's an idea. And so a lot of times, ideas, you know, but it's a very exciting kind of idea for some people. So it makes for a good article.
And it was the former commissioner. I just, former commissioner that they talked to and then I think they probably called our staff. But on our walking tours, it was a point of discussion that people were talking about. But I, I, I didn't get a call on this one to be in the paper. But it'd be a good Firehouse Subs.
It'd be what?
No.
Not Firehouse Subs.
Firehouse Subs. Yeah.
Needs to be better than that.
They got a little more excitement than that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know, good point. Anything else?
I'm done.
All right.
Could I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I'd like to say congratulations to Kay on her promotion and we will miss her. And thank you for all your work over the years.
Yes, good job. Any others? Ken, welcome to the commission and I would like for us to go ahead and bring 2 o'clock bar closings. We've talked about it, so it's time for us to discuss that and bring it as an issue because we, we said it and it's time. Yes, sir.
My, my people in Zone 2 really want that 2 o'clock bar closing. But I have a suggestion I think might help a little bit. It's not gonna cure it, whether it's 2 o'clock or whether it's 3 o'clock. Close off the parking spaces from, from 9 to closing time, or at least till closing time. And allow taxis, ride share to park right in front of some of those places where the trouble pours out onto the street. Give them a chance to get in a car and get gone rather than standing around out there drunk and looking for somebody to fight or whatever they do. It's worth a try to, to do that.
Be a part of, that's a different issue.
I know it is.
But certainly something you can, y'all can have a discussion about. But the real hot issue is gonna be that closing time and, you know, we have to, it's reckoning day, so.
You want it on the 15th or the 1st?
I'm happy with it on the 15th. I'm ready to, ready to get to it. So we've all had enough time to study it and hear from the people who wanna raise hell about it. No, no more discussion. We've already discussed.
Voting item.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already discussed that item. So we can either decide yay or nay and move on, okay? I think that's it for me tonight. Good meeting. Anything, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just real quick, we need individuals to serve on boards here for the city. Please check our website within the document. If we don't start getting individuals to apply, we will be starting to make recommendations as staff to you all of some names that we think may be beneficial. So any citizen that's out there or you have a name, let us know because we're getting to the point where we're not able to have a quorum. I will be sending out dates to you all for a retreat in 2022. And it will be an all-day retreat, so it may have to be on a.
It's on a Saturday.
On a Saturday. We'll feed you breakfast and lunch. Yeah, we'll feed you. And it'd be in a location where citizens will have the opportunity to be there as well. Not dinner, Commissioner Kent, too. Yeah. And also, the Roofing and Murals Program, me, Drew Reed and the city attorney were just recently talking about that. We're gonna be meeting to try to accelerate some of those things, to get them in, in place. However, we do have one mural that has been approved by, I think, the Midtown Redevelopment Board that individuals are interested in us moving forward. That had an image, I think, of Dr. Bethune and some others. So we're gonna evaluate to see if we can move something forward that's already been approved, using some of those funds or go back. But that's one of the things that citizens have been talking about, about that particular mural. And before I got here, it had been discussed. But the Roofing and Murals Programs, we'll be bringing that information back to you all relatively quickly.
Yeah, I would really like to get a couple of murals in place before Black History Month on MMB.
So that, that's where we are, but the board, serving on the board is essential. Please get us that so we can have quorms and, and move some of our different organizations, like the Leisure Services Boards, all of those forward. And also the date will be, I'll send out a couple of dates, asking for a retreat in 2022, probably latter part of January or first part of February.
Okay. Two things I forgot. One, we got great news on Dr. Bethune's statue. As you all may know or may not know, Dr. Bethune, well, you know, she's going in the Statuary Hall. But there are two areas of Statuary Hall. One is inside of the main rotunda. And the other one is down in, I won't call it the basement. But the person who is John Gorey, inventor of the air conditioning, of air conditioning, is the current representative of Florida and he's in the main rotunda. But we got word today that, and I hope I'm not saying this too fast. I got in trouble the last time. I gave out some information one time on the statue that being a member or director of the board, I gave out information. But she just, they just told me tonight, but anyway. Because the news journal is supposed to have first op that knowing and, and NewsCenter2. But at any rate, she will be going in the main rotunda, so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. She's going in the main rotunda. She will be just a few steps down from, he's gonna go down to the basement. He's been there 100 years. So she's gonna go in the main rotunda. She'll be just a few feet away from Rosa Parks. And it's, it's really an amazing thing. I cannot, cannot be prouder. And another thing is, 10,000 people have visited the statue here in Daytona Beach. 10,000. And the final thing is, after a 14, what year is this? This is 2021, 2005, 15-year hiatus from coaching. I've come out of retirement to coach nine and 10-year-olds with the city Leisure Services. And I am beyond excited. Had our first practice last night. And if you know anything about me, I've never enjoyed anything any more than coaching and teaching, the two greatest pleasures of my life. And so it's not about winning, but this team is gonna get better and better every day. And I'm, I'm excited about it. So if I'm not in place, Commissioner Reed, I will come to the meeting on Tuesday night in sweat suit. I won't have on a suit and tie, but I will come from practice to our meeting. But I take coaching and, and teaching seriously. So education is important and that's a part of it. But I'm excited and excited about our Leisure Services because they are, you know. One thing I will say though is that we need more space because this league is jam-packed and we're, in my opinion, literally having to turn people away. And I do not like that. We should not be turning kids away because I got, there's a waiting list. So I don't like that. So I'll just let you all know. Got a problem. And it's not so much as more space. We need to have more space just for this league even. So you may wanna talk with them because there's some kids on the waiting list. I got kids that wanna sign up and I don't like seeing that. So at any rate, Bob?
Nothing, brother.
Nothing? All right, this meeting is not adjourned. I'm used to doing that, but we will hear from the greatest citizens in all of America, residents of Daytona Beach.
Okay. Our first speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is John Nicholson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Beach. I would like to commend our city manager for his accessibility to the residents of this city because we haven't had that from a lot of the commissioners. And he's been available and accessible to us and I wanna thank you for that. That's why I got here and advocated for a great man to take that position that will make some corrections here in this city. I have a list of the streets that need to be paved over in my neighborhood in Zone 6. Key Street, the street that I live on, Maple Street, Live Oak, all cracked up. Rep. Paul Reed was raised over because in deplorable condition. Caroline Street, up by the city yard, that one's in bad shape. That needs to be paved. So Marion Street is also all cracked up. There are many streets and I don't have a list of the streets that they're gonna, that, that they are gonna pave. And I hear Mayor talking about they need more money for taxes. Well, we've been here all these years and these streets have not been paved. So I was against that before and I rallied all the people in my neighborhood. I have over 5,000 people on my Facebook, 22,800 on my LinkedIn, all doctors, lawyers, judges. And I advocate it to not give that money because you haven't done anything with the money that we have been giving you. So also, I'd like to say disorderly conduct by public officials will not be tolerated by commissioners, our clerks here. Please be courteous to our taxpayer residents who are paying your salary. You are making the, I heard Ruth Taylor say here early that you're making the right, praying to make the right decisions. Well, the right decision was not made. When you closed our park down at City Owl, the people just not, do not have access to that park. It's been roped off and there's bird crap all over it ever since you took office. Mayor Hendrick, that's what has happened. That park needed to be open so that we can use the park that we are paying taxes for. And that one and several others have been closed down. And you only use the fact that the homeless people, well, we've had homeless people for years. And our parks was not closed down. I, I, I speak up to make a difference and I speak out against injustice and racism and discrimination because I'm a former president of the NAACP. And you took us out of the meeting. I spoke up about that so we can get back and have our rights brought to us. So please, go over there and check that lot out on Magnolia. Ms. Reed, you'll find out it says, right there on Key Street, it has grown up again, eight feet tall. It needs to be cut. Thank you.
Now, Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue, how do you, Quanita? If I had known, I would've gone to the meeting. But I asked the Chisholm years ago to put those boards on the outside so that people knew what was coming on in the city and the meetings that were going on. I'm asking if we could put, whenever there's a meeting that the citizens should go to, like that one, that it'd also be included on the boards outside. Secondly, newspaper article about the firehouse. They've been talking about that for years. It makes sense. They need to move it. And my suggestion is that we move it with Chisholm's suggestion that we move over to the Channel 2 building. That we create synergy in that location. The county has, are gonna rebuild on their lot. They're talking about moving the courthouse to that lot. If we had City Hall and the new fire station in that lot, we would have four major development in one location. That's synergy. It might help move downtown. Lastly, I missed the redistricting meeting. The federal government, the state government now by law, and the county all have standards for redistricting. We in our city do not match any of them, all right? Jury mandating has been outlawed and we have done that for years in this city. Two, they ask for compact districts. Ours are not compact. They ask that communities of interest not be chopped up. Our communities are chopped up. Beachside is chopped up into three districts. Midtown is chopped up into three districts. Downtown is chopped up into three districts. I understand Republicans are now a majority. But the Democrats moved these zones for their, whatever reasons they decided to do so. It was to elect Democrats. I'm asking to look at Beachside as an independent, definable zone. They say you have to have major boundaries. The ocean is a major boundary. The river is a major boundary. The city limits of Ormond Beach is a major boundary. The city limits of the shores is a major boundary. It is a definable area. Everyone knows about Midtown, Shady Place, Nova Road, Mason, everybody knows that. Why do we chop it up? It's not allowed anywhere else in the nation, in the state or in the county, except for the city of Daytona Beach. So I'm asking, when we do the redistricting, that we attention, that we pay attention to local boundaries. Thank you.
Our next speaker was Krista Goodrich and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Hi again, Krista Goodrich, 2800 South Peninsula. So recently I've been learning a lot about what people with disabilities go through. And not that mine's major, mine's very minor. But I learned tonight that our parking for the handicap for commission meetings is really not good. I'm pretty athletic and where I had to park tonight to get here, I was completely worn out. And I don't think I've ever seen a lot of people with wheelchairs or anything here. So I just think maybe you should revisit and look at opening those downstairs doors that are next to the handicap parking spot to allow people with disabilities to come in during commission meetings. This will not affect me but for a couple of weeks, but it's something that's important. Also, I did wanna address something that got brought up and that was that we don't have adequate parking on Main Street. But I would like to say for me and my business partner that we feel we have more than enough parking right now on Main Street. And I know I've said differently in the past, but after being there for three years, we have multiple city and county lots that are underutilized. Working there for three years, I've never not been able to park near my bar within some kind of reasonable walking or scooting distance, except during Bike Week or major events. But that's always gonna be a parking issue. What we have in Main Street is a lack of things to do besides drink. And I own a bar, so I understand that I'm saying that. So we need more businesses and more fun things to do on Main Street. I also wanted to say that I am in shockingly support of tiny houses. I know that's a surprise to all of you. And also, we brought up murals on Midtown. I'd love to see murals in Main Street start to happen and all the improvements we've been talking about on Main Street. So let me know what we can do to make those move along. But that's my comments for the night. And oh, also, I feel like Doyle missed a good one tonight because this was a fantastic meeting. And it was the first time that I've seen 4-3 and 5-2. And really cool that I don't agree with everyone and they don't agree with me, but it's neat to see a commission really working and having discussions and finding solutions that we haven't been able to do in the past. So great job, everyone, even if you're wrong. Great job. I don't, me and Tom don't find that it is. Yeah, yep. Oh, but I'm a stubble of the time, do I? We do need a parking spot for the obstacle which is being repaired. It should be in front of 816 Main Street.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams and on deck is Steve Miller.
Good evening, Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue. You threw me off, Mr. Mayor. I had a whole good list of good things to say and you brought up 2 o'clock bar closing. Now I gotta come in angry. I don't think, and, and this is, this is what I'm gonna say. I do believe that it's a conversation that needs to be had and it is an issue. I just don't agree with the fact that I don't think that it should be the next, on the next agenda for a vote. Bring it to a conversation. I know there's been a lot of conversations with the businesses people and the stuff like that, but as we are improving that area, that Seabreeze is not an issue every week. It's not an issue all the time. It's not an issue every day. And I can say that faithfully because I'm there Friday, Saturday, sometimes Wednesday. The issue, don't, don't judge my life. He can tell you, I met him over there one day. He can tell you, I met him over there one day. But no, I say that to say this, yeah, there was an issue with a certain particular business and I've had conversations with people on that. That does not reflect on what Seabreeze is. And what I will say is this, when you're looking at people with jobs, a lot of us, especially in that particular area, work in hospitality. Hospitality jobs do not get off of work until 11:00. That's if their replacement come on time. That's 11:30, 12:00. By the time you get home to change, it's already 1:30. You're already reducing the people that need that time to go out and have fun. Now, I remember Commissioner Traeger said, push it to 3:00. I'm with you. Because it's usually 2:45, 3:00, we're at the restaurant, we're going home. It is not an issue as people say it is now that we have gotten control of certain businesses without saying these names that have presented a issue. Now, I will say this, we go out and we have a good time. I want to keep, continue to have that good time after 2:00 because it's just, it's just what we do. We don't have much here. There's not a lot of things that we can do to have fun here. And I know the Hookah Lounge is an issue that's coming up as well. And I want to say, I would rather have those conversations at the same time because the issue I see, we have the issue, we solve that, we bring another issue up that kind of goes against the issue that we already have. Let's have a conversation and a idea plan for what entertainment looks like going out for adults here in the city of Daytona Beach. So I would say, I kind of really lost my train of thought, oh, well, I got it back because I looked at her. And I'm slowly, I'm quietly getting yelled at. We've been busy. This city has been busy. But Mr. Manager, if you can give us an update on some of the stuff that we got coming into work, especially with the opera funds, I know roofing is in there, I know the youth commission is in there, I know there's a lot of things that we overlook, but we can get a timeline so that we can begin planning our year out for next year. I appreciate it.
Right on time.
Our next speaker is Stephen Miller and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. Like to start by saying, I love Daytona Beach. We are truly a very diverse community and let's take a look at our commission here. And whoever she was with the wheelchair, she's absolutely right. You guys are doing some absolutely great things and I'm so excited to see the progress that this city is, is, is going, leading to. And Mr. Phiecher, I heard so many people talk about the walk of Midtown and they said, well, Steve, all he did was walk into Midtown and he haven't really done anything. You've really changed the mindsets of this entire community and I want to say thank you very, very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you for what you've been doing. I'm, I'm just amazed and, man, I'm, I'm excited to hear about this team that you have because I'm, I got a little courtship in me too, buddy. We can do that. The, the mirrors on Midtown and even Main Street, you know, I know we're going to have to get a committed to do that because we don't really trust no one individual to make that decision how great it is, but if we can get you guys to give us a name, we can actually get that project going. You know, like a lot of the boards, we still don't have enough people even have a forum so we truly need to get that taken care of. And John almost made me lose my thought. I'm so glad that we have three commissioners representing Beachside. I love the fact that there's three commissioners representing Midtown District. I don't know who came up with that plan. I think it's great because, you know, the beach is very important to us and Midtown is very important to, to a lot of us. And in fact, it's, it's the Mary McLaughlin Boulevard, you know, I, in fact, that led the effort to name that Mary McLaughlin Boulevard. And, and, and as relates to the late nights, if y'all would let us open up Midtown, you know, it would alleviate what's going on on Seabreeze. The only place to go and have a good time in our community is Seabreeze. And we've been begging to open up our Midtown area so that we can have entertainment and that we can create economic opportunity over here. And, 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 and I was thinking about the roofing program and, and, and I've seen commissioners do a lot of things and y'all reaching to the general funds or the reserve funds and you do whatever you really want to do for some of the richest people in our community. Why can't we go into our general funds or reserve funds and help fix the roofs up? Why don't we do something with Midtown? Five, we're going to invest in us. I'm Steve Miller. Okay. We still need more money.
Get more money. Always need more, but I understand that.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening. Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street. I'm not going to take my three minutes at all. I'm going to say what I'm going to say and try to sit down. Midtown, when they came up with the name Midtown years ago, or more than 10 years ago, I thought it was great. But we know, I know, and most of you know, that all of this came from Midway. That was from International to Mason or wherever. And then we had Newtown, International to Shady Place. That is a large area that we really need to look at. Every time we talk about Midtown now, I hear Dr. Mary McLaughlin, Second Avenue, Dr. Mary McLaughlin, Midtown, Newtown. Yes, I've been to Newtown, Zone 5, everywhere I wanted to be. But Newtown needs some help. And I will be talking with the city manager sometime soon and we're going to talk about it. There's a core area also, Ms. Mays, same as Mason Avenue down there. We have it on MLK. MLK in this town is the worst MLK I've ever seen in any town. That is from International South, in which we will visit very soon. So I'm available. I've been on the Midtown Board and I guess I'm going to have to go back on there and I've been on other boards also, but I will be passing out the information to the community that we do need people on these boards. Have a good evening and by the way, you had a belated, I'm giving you a belated Thanksgiving Day. I'm sure all of y'all were very thankful and you're thankful every day for being able to give. And on the day of the parade, don't forget, Ms. Paula Reed, that's my birthday. That's my birthday, okay? And yesterday was my friend's birthday behind me, Ms. Kim Gasson. And we have another birthday coming up on the 16th. So we are thankful. Have a good night.
Fair, but thank you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Mark's birthday is the 16th.
Yes, happy birthday, old man.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak and on deck is Patricia Bliss.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. So I didn't know about this meeting about downtown apartments. I would have been all over it except I just got off the train from visiting my family, but I still probably would have been there. But I, I'm so in favor of downtown apartments. A downtown apartment project would have to be so bad for me to not want it, like, because cities need lots of people and apartments are good in cities. So yeah, downtown apartments, good, good idea. Low impact development. The week before Thanksgiving week, there was a conference on low impact development, which is kind of like natural, green, stormwater mitigation type things, swales, vegetation, really good stuff. Commissioner Strickland was there, many leaders of the, the county and people in different, from different cities were there. So it was a nice mix of people. I got some materials and brought them to, to David and Andy of Public Works. And I know that all these ideas about green stormwater infrastructure and low impact development are super timely and they're just going to be percolating around the community. And if anyone has any question about it anytime, I'll say what I always say, I don't always remember stuff, but I'm really good at looking things up. So anyone can always ask me a question and I will try to find out the answer. And then finally, I am really proud, well, I'm actually very proud of our city for many reasons, but I'm proud of these meetings because we sit here, we have different viewpoints, but there is such a, just a really nice atmosphere at our meetings and, oh, and I also want to say, the city has generally done a really good job getting to be, doing a really good job of publicizing all the meetings, like, all the different stuff that's going on, like, whatever that was about downtown apartments. It was probably on the website and I probably missed it, but things are getting good, like on the Facebook page, there, things are announced, things are announced on the website. So it feels like it's getting easier to, to keep track of when all the meetings and things are. And then finally, speaking of meetings, tomorrow night is first Thursday of the month, which means Beachside Neighborhood Watch meeting. And as usual, with neighborhood meetings, everybody's invited and we're supposed to be getting a presentation from, like, on environmental stuff from Suzanne Schiber of Dream Green Volusia and she'll be talking about the storm drain program and, and various other important issues. So everybody's invited. We hope to see you there and thank you all so much. Have a lovely evening.
Be there. Our next speaker is Patricia Bliss and on deck is Destiny Williams.
Good evening, Patricia Bliss, 128 Pointe Woods, Drove. Over two weeks ago, there was a meeting regarding Indigo Lakes Golf Course and I think you had already heard a little bit about the meeting. There was no working microphone, there was seating for only 50 people, even though hundreds showed up, and there was no handouts of the proposal. I'm here to let you know that the developer is still showing how little he respects the city residents of the area. When requested, they said that they would have copies of the PDF of the PowerPoint presentation available for the residents. Have you given them your email? I requested it. Over two weeks later, I haven't received a copy. No one that I know has received a copy and I'm guessing, if Commissioner, and too, you haven't received a copy either. The developer is just not a good friend of the city residents and they constantly show their disregard to the residents and the community. The developer said they wanted to receive the residents' inputs regarding their proposal and then they provided a terrible proposal that took a residential neighborhood and interlaced a, a office in light industrial uses throughout it and they think that that's going to be a good, acceptable plan. They knew what the zoning was before they purchased the property and the residents want them to continue to use their existing zoning and land use. If they can't create a working golf course, they should make the property a conservation area and move on and develop elsewhere. Bottom line, the developer is not a good fit for the city or for our community. Thank you. Good night.
I'm sure you're aware, there has nothing been brought to the city. So they might have heard from the residents and decided they're not coming back. I mean, this has happened in Pelican Bay, so there is nothing right now. And I received a lot of surveys that I passed out myself. They've been turned over to the city clerk and so if they come back, every, it can be shared with everyone here, but there is absolutely nothing and I've told Indigo residents and actually, I haven't received any more calls because they know there's nothing. So I'm telling you, nothing. Okay?
And I'm telling you that when something, I've said this to the residents, when something comes, we'll be prepared for them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? All right.
Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Destiny Williams.
Good evening, 809 Cottle Circle North. Going to keep my mask on because we're still in a pandemic. Just wanted to piggyback off of something that was said earlier about Seabreeze not being an issue. There is a social media webpage or whatever that's dedicated to the shenanigans that happen in Daytona and a lot of them are from what happens on the weekends at Seabreeze Weekly. Also, Commissioner Reed, I emailed you a couple of weeks ago about the speed bumps on Lockhart. We're getting a lot of speeding through there. I know I mentioned before because they were torn up and they were damaging cars and stuff. They haven't been replaced yet and the speeding is just ridiculous. It sounds like we're at the 500. They're just going and looping around. Also, in that email, I mentioned about the flooding, which I know you mentioned to give the city manager some time because he's just in the position, but my thing is the flooding has been issued for years. It's not something new. And I know that, like, in my area, we don't get the drains cleaned that often over Cottle Circle, Marjorie Lane. If that's something that could be more on a regular basis because we do have those oak trees and those leaves come in the drain. So yeah, it was a lot to unpack in this meeting, a lot of the voting, very interesting, very interesting to see. I'm glad to see that there was some more people here and I'm trying to encourage people to come out to speak their piece instead of just sidebar conversations. But yeah, thank you for your time. Y'all have a good night.
Yes, thank you.
Before you end, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address what was said. One, on the speed bumps, I did bring that to the staff's attention and Assistant City Manager Betty Goodman did address the speed bumps and she was told they were going to have to do another speed study and she asked, why would you have to do a study to replace speed bumps that were already there? I think they were just worn. Do we have an update on that, Mr. Manager?
I, I don't know and Betty's not here. We will follow back up because she did send out the email.
Mm-hmm. And that's Lockhart between Orange Avenue and what's that street? Where it goes? Cottle, Cottle, yeah. Well, not quite Cottle Circle. What does it run into? It's Orange Avenue with Lockhart that runs into just beyond Cottle.
But we'll pull it back up and if, if Betty has the email in the response.
Loomis, Loomis. That corner.
All right.
Premier Hayes Corner.
And she was locked out of her computer.
Oh.
I'm just telling you because you, you have a legitimate, you were locked out for about four weeks.
It was not four weeks.
I'll click on the wrong.
And with the drain situation, we have started an adopt a drain program where we help ourselves because there, there is a need for our drains to be cleaned more. So we as a community maybe need to get out there. I mean, we've been doing ours on my street. I don't even have, what do you think, I don't have curbs. We got little drain things that are in the ground, but we will address those issues. Okay?
And when Suzanne comes next week, she will address some other ways that we as a community and we as a commission may be able to support highlighting our drains so that people will see them more and become more conscious of not putting debris in harm's way. So it is an important issue. I think it's both of us, the community and the commission and staff has to do an even better job of ensuring that we, we take care of our drainage issues.
I agree. And also, are we going to, you know, the, the heavy rains and the bad weather came when we were going to have that pickup of hazardous materials. Are we going to replace that day with, okay?
Mr. Mayor, one quick comment. Zone 5 Neighborhood Watch Monday is having our Christmas dinner and all are welcome, all are invited.
Okay, great. All right. Good, good announcement. I hope you be there.
And there was just one other thing I wanted to tell Ms. Bliss, no, Ms. Bliss, I wanted also to let you know, that meeting they had was not an official meeting, so they still, I know a lot of people complained they couldn't hear, but it was not even an official meeting. So before anything would even come to planning board or commission, anything, they have to have official meeting. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Good night, Daytona Beach. On to greater things. Great. On to greater things, greatness. Good night.